Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, October 28, 2024. And this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kurzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure, as I had the pleasure of doing today of the meeting that I missed. That was fun. Okay, join me in the salute of the flag, please. My allegiance.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
I have that, thank you. I will now take roll call. James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Eric Alpo.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman is absent this evening. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Daniel Shanomeo is absent this evening. Jen Souter.
Here.
Vice Chair Gudmund.
Here.
Chairwoman Kurzak.
Here. First item on our agenda is the discussion of our 2025 Planning Board dates. I was hoping that everyone was able to take a look. If they have any concerns, let me know. Now would be the time, because they're going up on the website. Okay, everybody's good. All right, can I get a motion to pass the 2025 meeting dates for the Planning Board in 2025?
So moved.
Second. Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Eric Alpo.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Jen Souter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gudmund.
Yes.
Chairwoman Kurzak.
Yes. All right, one thing that I'd like to just take care of, just like a little housekeeping here. We've been asked, we've been reached out to by some of our council folks that have received some statements from our city folk that they don't know who some of us are. So what I'd like to say is that it's consistent, meaning that to my right are always our professionals. Our city engineer, Sam?
Board engineer.
City planner?
Board engineer.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, board engineer, you're right.
Board planner.
Board planner. Donna and Jack, our attorney. And always to my far left is our Planning Board Secretary, Marie. And then it's the rest of us. We kind of swap around depending on where there's a seat. But what I would ask is that when we do a roll call, perhaps when we do a roll call, if we were just like, when you say our name, just so that we raise our hand for one or two rounds, because people are saying that they don't know who we are. And I understand that it's hard to hear us, because you don't know who's speaking. It could be any of us that are speaking, because the cameras are a little further away. So when you're watching these, we are getting notes from the population that they would like to know who we are and who's speaking, and just to introduce us once, just to go around so we know. So, there you go. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is a resolution that will be moved to...
That's going to go on November 18.
Okay, November 18th, for Springwood Ave. The resolutions, we received the okay from the applicant, that it's okay if we move that to our next meeting. And I don't think we need any okay's for all that. Okay. And now, we have the Delta Townhouse development. Come on up. Now, one thing I would like to mention, just to reiterate, process. Okay? I know that many of you have been here before, and some of you may not have. So after every witness, I will be asking if the public would like to ask a question based on what that witness testified to. Those are the questions that can be asked. And I know that a number of you have been requested to, you know, that'll be answered by someone else or whatever. So you can ask as many of those questions as you wish. After we're finished with all of the presentations, and the applicant says, "We're done," I will be asking the public, you have three minutes, to say whatever you want to say. Okay? Three minutes, there'll be a timer. But I know that sometimes questions turn into comments, and I just want you to know that that's the process, so that we don't... So if we say, "Hey, that's a comment," that comment can go later, and we will listen to all the comments. Until 10 o'clock.
If I may?
You may.
During the Jack Serpico Board of Attorney, during the public comment portion, okay, I believe there are two individuals who have requested that letters, thank you, that letters be submitted. Elaine Roca?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
And Karen May?
Good.
Okay. Yes, during the public portion, I want you to read your documents into the record.
Okay.
Okay? Each of you. And I have a copy if you don't have one. Okay, good. And then, because I got to have that testify to under oath by you, because these are your opinions. Okay?
Okay.
So we'll just make sure that you have sufficient time for that, to read those into the record.
Does that have to fit within the three minutes?
It won't. I have five pages.
Okay. Can we, let's extend out a minute or two.
Well, for the letters...
Yeah, for the purpose of...
For the purpose of getting the letters into the record.
Unless they're verified under oath, they're hearsay, and I can't let them...
No, I understand the reason. I just want to make sure they have the opportunity to...
Yeah, I want to make sure, yes. We will make sure you have ample opportunity to get this in.
What if I have exhibits attached to mine?
Well, if you have exhibits, then you'll submit them. You can't, you'll tell us what they are, and we'll give copies to the Board, and the Board can use them for consideration.
I have copies.
Yeah, okay. That'll work. Okay.
Okay? All right.
Okay. Mr. Curley, let's get you sworn in again. How are you? Please raise your right hand. You solemn swear or firm that testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and expel your surname.
Robert Curley, C-U-R-L-E-Y-W.
Sorry. Okay. Thank you, you can sit. And why don't I swear in my staff?
Sure.
Please raise your right hand. You solemn swear or firm that testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names to the record and identify your position with the Board.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Sam Avogion, Board Assistant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, before I ask questions of Mr. Curley, my name is Jennifer Philip Smith, and I am the attorney for the applicant. When we left off at the last meeting, the Board asked us to consider making several changes. And since that time, we have submitted revised exhibits that show most of those changes. So what Mr. Curley will be explaining momentarily, just to summarize, you asked us to shift the building along 8th Avenue to provide a greater buffer area to Webb. We were able to do so, and there's now going to be a six-foot buffer for plantings in that area. You asked us to take a look at shifting the building along 7th Avenue and to square it off to create more green space at the corner of Webb. We were able to do so, and Mr. Curley will explain that. You asked for greater variation in the facade colors in the rear, which are visible when you're looking behind each of the buildings. We were able to do that by taking the colors that we were already using in the front and bringing them into the back, so it's not one color. And we did submit exhibits that show that. You asked us to enhance the architecture at the corners of Webb and 7th and Webb and 8th. And what we did is take the enhanced architecture that the council had approved for the corners of 7th and 8th and Kingsley, and then replicate that on the corners of 7th and 8th and Webb. You asked us to move the sprinkler rooms. As Mr. Curley will explain, we were able to move the sprinkler rooms in front of one set of the utility meters, but not the other, based on the internal layout. And you asked for additional trees, and we were able to do that by adding trees into the spaces between some of the driveways. So Mr. Curley's going to go over that in greater detail, but we did take your comments to heart, and hopefully you'll see today that we were able to make improvements in the plan that were consistent with those comments. So Mr. Curley, that was my very basic overview, but let's go through each one if you can refer to the plan. And I think we're up to Exhibit A8. I think last meeting we ended with A7. So if you can maybe explain what the exhibit is here by title, we'll mark it A8, and then I'll ask some questions.
And you don't want the one that's on the easel, you want the one that's being displayed?
No, the one that's on the screen, correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
I have, this is the dimension plan dated 9/27/24.
Struggling here with the mouse.
This was the plan that we submitted, correct?
That's correct.
All right. That was a plan dated 9/27/24 that was prepared by your office.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll get there in a minute. Give me a little second here. So it's entitled Dimension Plan Alternate 2. And again, this plan was prepared based upon the comments that were voiced by not only the Board members, but also the public, and it's dated 9/27/24.
Great.
Sorry about that.
All right. So let's talk about the shifting of the building along 8th Avenue, if you could point that out.
So, in order to, a comment was voiced, I believe, by one of the Board members that suggested possibly we could shorten some of the driveways on buildings that fronted along Kingsley Street. So in doing so, we were able to shift the whole drive aisle to the east. In addition, there was a larger area that we had on the east side of Building Number One, Four, excuse me, Building Number Four. And we were able to decrease that open area and provide additional planting area or buffer area along the Webb Street frontage. And what that revealed, or ultimately allowed us to get, was a six-foot setback consistent for the west side of Buildings One and Building Four. And that's like what, the same shift occurred on the building that's located on the southern part of the property or on the bottom of the exhibit. In addition to that, we also shifted the buildings that are on the interior portion of the exhibit, which are Buildings, again, Five, and I just want to make sure I'm saying the right ones, Buildings Five and Six. And we shifted those also to the east. What that provided for was additional setback along Webb Street for the center building, and we have that now at 13 feet. The second big change that we did was, there was a concern or discussion in regard that the building followed the right-of-way line of 7th Avenue, and that would be for, again, Building Number One. What we were able to do was rotate that building and provide for a much larger setback. So basically, it follows the 8th Avenue parallel orientation. And we now have a 15.5-foot setback located at the west side of Building Number, again, Building Number One, and again, a six-foot setback for the entire frontage on Webb. What we ended up having to do was we had to reorient the drive aisle, and now the drive aisle is perpendicular, it doesn't have a slight angle to it. And we were able to accomplish all of those items that the Board members and some of the public voiced concern over. So, again, the additions that we added to the plan, and this is to be consistent, we added porches on the corner units, that would be consistent with the landscape plan. Again, we shortened the driveways on the units that were along Kingsley Street to be able to shift everything to the east. We shifted Building Number Four, again, to provide for an additional buffer and/or planting area on the west side to provide, again, landscaping along the entire frontage of Webb Street. And then the last item that we did, we were able to relocate the gas meters towards the front or towards the garage portion of the unit. Previously, we had them all stacked behind. The sprinkler room really wasn't able to be relocated due to the fact that it's adjacent to the garage area, and it needs to have interior access for potential maintenance. So that's why the sprinkler room didn't really shift. I think we shifted it maybe two feet.
But you were able to tuck the gas meters in behind it instead of on the street side, correct?
That's correct.
Bob, have you just verified to the Board that even with all these revisions, you are still able to maintain your drive aisle and the same amount of parking?
Yes, that's correct. One other, and that's a good segue. So, over the past few months, the master developer has been working with the city to make some modifications to the infrastructure component report and orientation of some of the parking stalls. So, that recently just was approved, I believe it was last week.
That's right, by the council, correct?
Approved by the council, excuse me, yes. And that basically provides for the bump outs on all of the corners of the proposed development. And it also provides for reverse parking. Now, the plan that I have, that was submitted to the Board, does not show the reverse parking, and I didn't want to show something that wasn't approved at the time, so that's why it still shows the head-in parking. But the exhibit that I have on the easel, which I can talk to and start, and I can mark that for everyone, oops. Sorry about that.
So that parking is going to, the 7th Avenue parking is going to look the same as 8th today?
Correct.
Because today, 8th is back in.
Correct.
So 7th is going to be back in also, right?
May I work this exhibit?
Sure.
Be A9.
Please do.
They're showing 8th as head-in parking.
Right.
Yeah, it's back in.
So, so just...
I mean, it's...
They're showing it as head-in.
Is it going to be back in or is it going to be head-in?
So, at the time when I prepared the exhibit that I submitted to the Board, the resolution wasn't finalized. So I didn't want to show something that wasn't approved.
That's fair.
So that's why that is backwards from what it's going to be proposed.
So obviously, the master developer is going to be the one proposing this. It's been approved by the council, but I think the most important part of it is, how many on-street parking spaces are there today, and how many will there be when the master developer now completes the revised infrastructure plans?
So currently, there are 45 on-street parking stalls that surround the block. That's existing today. When the overall improvements are completed, we will have 51 parking stalls.
Okay. Then that's because we're, now it's no longer going to be parallel, we're...
Correct. There's a number of improvements that are being made. There's a new parking island that's being proposed on 7th. It's angled parking instead of parallel parking. And then likewise, on 8th, there's a new island being proposed, and on top of that, on top of everything else, excuse me, there's, we're doing the reverse parking, which allows for some additional stalls. All of this is compliant with Title 55, and the setbacks to the parking stalls, to the stop bars, and parking stalls to the crosswalks are all compliant.
Explain to us why reverse parking, why is that advantageous?
So there's a number of positives to it. The biggest one that I can instantly talk about is if there's a bike lane on the road and you're backing out, you don't have an opportunity to possibly see a biker in a bike lane. To me, that's the biggest positive. Same thing with pedestrians. There's a pedestrian that's potentially crossing the street. Some folks don't always turn both ways when they're backing up and looking. Again, that's another...
I'll add my two cents here, strong supporter of reverse angle parking. When people are getting their beach equipment out of the car, they'll now be doing it onto the sidewalk rather than into the street. And so it allows free flow of traffic for cars to leave without the potential of, you know, children and, you know, sand shovels and whatnot. So in our particular environment, I think there are...
Safer. There's a lot of safety.
Yeah, reasons why it's advantageous.
But I would like to thank you for bringing this up, because you truly didn't have to. But there were a lot of questions that have come up from the public and from us, so we appreciate you bringing this in, even though this has really nothing to do with this project. But thank you.
Understood.
So, one other, there were a number of other questions that were voiced by Board members and also the public, and I would just like everyone to understand. So, along Kingsley Street, right now, there's temporary sidewalk. So when the final development is complete with all the infrastructure improvements, there'll be a 12-foot-wide sidewalk along Kingsley Street. And our building setback on Kingsley Street is 11 feet. On 7th Avenue, again, right now, there's temporary sidewalk that's there, that there will be a 12-foot-wide sidewalk. And our building setbacks on the east side, our building setback is two feet from the right, from the back of the sidewalk. And on the west side, with the improvements and with the modifications that we did, we have a 15.5 setback along 7th Avenue. On Webb Street, there'll be an 11-foot-wide sidewalk, and the setback to the building will be, for Buildings One and Four, will be six feet, and for Building Number Five, which is the center building, that'll be 13 feet. And then along 8th Avenue, the proposed sidewalk width is 10 feet wide, and again, our building setback for both buildings will be eight feet.
Just to clarify, the sidewalk width you're talking about is a sidewalk in those pavers by the curb?
That's correct.
All together, right?
That's correct.
So those would be cumulative, right? So if there's an 11-foot sidewalk and a six-foot buffer, that's 17 feet from the curb line?
Correct.
Right. Then one other change that was made, if you could just speak briefly to it, is the additional trees. My understanding is that trees have now been proposed in between the driveways on the buildings facing 7th and 8th, correct?
So when we were able to shift the buildings to the east, we were able to provide foundation plantings along the entire length of the building, and then we were also able to provide some Stevens Hollies located at the corners of the buildings. And those are for the too-long, too-short-ended buildings. For the building fronting on 5th, we had existing trees, and we supplemented with some additional plantings, because we have a little more space, an additional two feet. The area that we did our biggest change, we were able to relocate some utilities and provide trees in between the driveways for both the east, excuse me, Buildings One and Building Four.
So then we, I had a few questions I did not get a chance to finish up with you last time, that concerned the engineer's report, for ready to turn to that.
Can we just clarify a couple things before? Bob, so what is the space between the driveways where the new trees are being installed? Do you know the dimension?
It's about four and a half feet.
And you said you relocated the utility, that I think that was where the water and sewer were coming in before, and so they're no longer coming in?
That'll be in the driveways.
They're going to be in the drives?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, sorry, sorry, sorry. In your new exhibit with the reverse parking, did the number of on-street spaces on Webb change from the exhibit you gave us?
No.
Okay. So you were able to maintain, you had nothing to do with that?
There's five proposed now.
Okay, very good, thank you. That confirms for us, there's no net loss.
There's actually a gain around the whole building.
Because of the other improvements.
Correct.
Under the exhibit they gave us, we were actually able to confirm no net loss of on-street work.
Can I ask something before we go to some other things? Is there any benefit, and it's a question, just because we're talking about the flow and the size of the drive aisles, is there any benefit to making any of this one-way inside the complex, like coming in on Webb, on the south, on side of Webb, and then coming out on the north side of Webb, to have that flow within the structure?
So you have room to do sidewalks?
So you have room to do things, so that the cars can flow, and that there's a constant flow, so it's not like you're never going against each other?
I wouldn't want to narrow the drive aisle more than what it is...
Oh, no, no, I'm not asking you to narrow it. I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. I meant, does it make any sense for any of it to be one-way within the complex? So you're coming in on the first one, on Webb, because it goes north, you come in that, onto the one-way, you're making a right into the complex as a one-way, and then you're flowing through the complex, and then you're coming out on Webb, on the north side, as a one-way, within the complex all?
I understand the question, or the proposal. I don't know that it really makes that much of a difference.
It would be possible, just to answer the question.
Yes, it would be possible.
All right. Does anybody else on the Board have any feelings about that one-way or no?
I thought about that.
I think this is an excellent idea.
I think if you could, we have a 24-foot-wide pavement. If you cut it to 20 foot and make it one-way, you could have a little bit more green space around those buildings. I have a look at the dynamics of it, but in theory...
I would disagree. I agree with your thought process that you could get more greenery. I would not want to decrease aisles anything less than 24 feet.
I'm going to say, making one-way, the only gain would be retaining space. I don't know if it's going to be can retains the space.
No, my point was not to reclaim space, but go ahead.
So there's so little volume in there that I don't think moving in one-way is going to really affect the product pattern.
Okay.
The only benefit would be narrowing the lanes and gaining retaining space, which if we can or cannot do is a different aspect. I don't think your volume calls for it.
The other thing that I'd like to find out about is that, you know the drive aisle that we're going, that goes north to south? There's a retaining wall on the north side. That retaining wall, how high is that retaining wall? I thought it was like 30 inches or something like that?
Two feet, 24 inches.
Okay. I'd like to propose that there's some modification there that has to do with, you see lights going down... going down that aisle, people are walking down the street, and there are buildings across the street. I would propose that there's something like, in other, in other developments, we've put berms, we've put some sort of, whether it's a planting, whether it's a fence, whether it's something to prevent the lights from the cars to go into people's eyes. So I'm talking about here, I'm talking about here and up here.
And we have, we have proposed plantings that are.
Are they high enough?
They're, they're going in at 30 inches?
Yes. Is that high enough to, to shield car lights?
In my opinion, yes.
That's my concern, and I'd like to put that into the resolution.
And again, those are planting heights, not, not maturity heights?
Mm-hmm. But you get, you get where I'm going. That's what, I, I don't want the public to see those lights, just like we don't like to have the public see any lights that are happening as far as traffic flow is concerned. But that's, that is going to be a request that I'd like to make, and if anybody else agrees, then we'll put it into the resolution. If not, then there you go. It's an opinion.
And Bob, when we're on those street ends, I know we vaguely touched on it, but it was towards the end of the meeting last, meeting, were you able to look at the maneuverability of those last two driveway accesses for a car?
Yes, a vehicle can easily negotiate that. And plus, in, in particular on the end units, these are going to be owned by a single person. If, if there's two cars or a car in the driveway and they misparked it, they can always move it over and make it, make it more convenient.
Can I just follow up on what Bob just said? So the, the notes from this project, the TRC and the subsequent developer agreement say that there should be an architectural landscape feature to create visual interest in that space car we just mentioned, between Buildings One and Two and Three and Four. So I, I think that should definitely be a condition. There's some.
There's something.
What they described is a, yeah, an architectural landscape feature to create visual interest.
Yes. And for, for, for my concerns is, is to block the, block the views, which is probably something I probably said in TRC.
Okay.
And just so we're clear, I think the testimony has been that that seat wall there was put in as, as a seat wall and that it was going to match the finishings on the buildings.
That's correct.
Right, there's no, there isn't a question about that. It's just, it's just, it can be done with landscaping.
Right. Okay. So we just had a handful of questions. Previously, I was asking about the engineering report from September, but we received a new one dated October 14th of 2024, which is just updated to reflect some of the revisions that were made. There were just a handful of comments we did not get to last time, starting with number 32.
Which date was that reported?
This is October 14th of 2024. So number 32, just a question about street grades. Just so that we're clear for number 32, the actual street grades won't be submitted as part of the planning board. Any of the street improvements will be submitted by the master developer to the city engineer, correct?
That's correct.
And then, but number 33 asked.
So just to clarify, I do want to share that, so I know it's saying it's streets because the internal streets that we're talking about. And it did seem fairly there, there weren't as many councilors or spot rates or all. That's the only reason I said it. So as long as you testify it's fine, I'm fine.
And yes, we, we will be below 10% and it'll be more than a half a percent.
And then same thing for number 33, although the waterfront redevelopment plan supersedes the zoning, we had a chance to look at the question asked about the dead-end streets.
And again, pedestrian vehicles could easily circulate through development and access both of the end units.
And just, just so the boards are aware, I do agree that it could be maneuvered. And this is, just looking at it, I think the maneuverability, you will have to make more than one turn to get into that end unit. It will be able to function, but it's just.
It'll be a three-point turn.
But was it a three-point turn when we had it at 20 feet versus 18 feet?
Yeah, that, that, that didn't change. Well, I'll let Bob ask.
Okay.
That is a good point. The driveway did get shorter, provides for a little less maneuverability. It still can be, it still can be accessed without a problem. With the drive aisle being 24 feet in width, it's more than, more than adequate to provide for that beginning turn, pull forward once, back up and then out. So it would be a three-point turn.
All right, number 34, this is just a correction that you, you will correct the asphalt calculation.
Yeah, the, I have a wrong dimension, or yeah, wrong dimension on the thickness of the, of the base course.
And then just going to number 52, there's a question about how the building would operate, would there be an HOA? I think the answer to that is yes, correct?
That's correct.
All right, number 53, just a question about the curb, internal curbing, where it's concrete versus Belgian block. Can you just explain that?
So there's gonna be both, the short answer is it's going to be both concrete and Belgian block. And the reason why we need some concrete curb is for the handicap ramps. When you try to put Belgian block in a handicap ramp, you can never get that seal. So we do a transition to concrete vertical curb at the handicap ramps. So that's the reason.
So just to clarify, so all, all curbs aside from curb ramps will be Belgian block?
Correct. That's correct.
And then just the last one, sorry, two more. Number 54, there is no mid-block crosswalk, correct?
That's correct.
Now I'm still gonna harp on, there is a mid-block crosswalk right there.
There is.
Oh, internal to this site.
Yeah, internal. I wasn't talking about Kingsley.
Okay.
The reason I brought that up and why I still feel adamant about it is if you have two cars parked and those parking in the driveway, if you don't mind zooming in, Bob. So if you had two cars parked there, I understand that we're maybe not the most highly trafficked area, and I do agree with that, but I didn't hope we could put signage if that was feasible to the applicant at a minimum. I don't know if it needs too much more than that, but something just to dictate. Because my only concern is, again, having a little one now, someone's walking through that sidewalk, you have two cars parked there, whatever size they may be, I just think it's, I think more visibility is positive.
We, we can provide a signage on the near side of, of both sides of the crosswalk.
Is that a raised crosswalk? Is that all a flush curb condition internally there?
So you, not, they should bring it up, it's an idea, you could do like a raised platform just to.
I mean, that would be the safest and most.
Yeah, especially since we do have so much grade on the driveways.
Yeah, I agree with that 100%.
And it would provide a tactile signal to the driver backing up.
Absolutely.
If they were to have to do that reverse turn. And I think it also formalizes and you could get a consistency in material across the street. You wouldn't even need a painted crosswalk anymore.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's just, again, like the only, the sole site to put a lot of work into, I think as an engineering standpoint, they did a really good job, that's the only thing I would.
Okay. Okay. And then the last one is number 59, they indicate a right-of-way agreement for utility pole guywire should be provided. Just to clarify, that guywire is going away, correct?
Right, all of the above-grade utility poles will be removed.
Okay, so we will not need the right-of-way agreement?
That's correct.
Just one more, I know we touched on it last week, I just wanted to verify, just put my notes for a little off. Currently we have the three lots that's going to be consolidated prior to finalization, or how long will that be consolidated?
Prior to the final cert, final certificate of occupancy for the last building in that fight.
I would actually say, just to clarify, prior to the certificate of completion being issued for the redevelopment under the subsequent developer agreement, which will likely happen just after the final CO, we have to come in and ask for a certificate of completion under our subsequent developer agreement. So in order to get that, we will have to file the subdivision.
Just to clarify again, that's, that's fine with me to, excuse me, I believe it was because of remediation?
That's correct.
So they have three lots right now?
Right.
They're consolidating two, three lots, one in my opinion, and I believe it came up in CCH, but one lot would be ideal. They are saying they're gonna consolidate to one lot towards the finalization of this project due to remediation is why they did three lots.
That's similar to other projects we've had in the works.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Check if we're supplying you with the legal documentation on the three lots that you're creating now and then ultimately send you the description.
We, we can do that, we can supply that, the three lot, the three legal descriptions and the subdivision deed and then for a consolidation deed at the end.
Thank you.
Those were all the questions that I had for Mr. Curly. I know we'll have public comments, but just to preview, we still have one more witness and that will be Mr. Barry, who will go with.
And what is he, what is he going to be telling us?
So he is our planner, so he will go over the design criteria and also using some of the other exhibits that were submitted, the color exhibits. And he'll go over the massing that's permitted under the redevelopment plan.
Okay. All right, I've got a couple of things before we move along.
Okay.
I hate to harp on this, but I'm going to.
Okay.
The, the one-way thing, I don't understand that if we can't, if we don't do a one-way direction, why we can't shorten the drive aisle from 24 to 20 or whatever, you know, I'm not an engineer, whatever the number is. We took away, we took away a certain amount of feet from every driveway to be able to create this space. I don't understand that if we do this one-way, why we can't give some of it back to the homeowners to extend the driveways. And I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's useful, but it sounds logical to me.
You said you didn't want to reduce the driveway.
I, reduce, right, the, the, the pass-through, which is now 24 feet, if we do it as one-way, I don't think you need 24 feet anymore.
Well, no, then you would reduce that drive aisle.
To some, to some number, whatever that number is. Doesn't that like?
I love it. Well, no, that's strongly for everything.
I'm feeling pretty good about it. Not that I'm an engineer, but I'm feeling pretty good about it.
So this is just my opinion, then it would be full design, even if you went, so with your minimum, and let's say you allowed pedestrian or bicycle traffic still within sight, you wind down to 16 feet, you gain four feet on each side of the drive aisle. And that is, that is large, but that's also a redesign and that's.
No, but, but it's.
It's possible.
Right, but it's also, it's also, I mean, the same, the same thought is that on that north, north-south drive aisle, if you, if, we, we have some plantings that are sitting there, that I guess that because there's some utilities there, that poor person, whoever buys that corner unit, can't we give them a couple of feet to be able to get out of their driveway a little more gracefully? I mean, by doing, by doing one-way.
Are you talking about the ones that are closest to where the retaining wall is?
Yes. Because that's, that's, that's the person that's going to have the problem going in and out.
Yeah, but he needs the most turning radius.
Exactly. He needs the most turnaround. So it's kind of like, I don't know what the right answer is, but it seems logical to me that if you go one-way and in a, in a complex, going one-way is not that big of a deal. But if it gains space for other things, why not?
I mean, everybody's gonna want to go out the north driveway anyway, because that's.
Because that's the way they go out.
Closest to the, yeah. Because you don't want to go to the short end of Webb and then, yeah.
Right.
I, I agree with you. I mean, I want sidewalks, I want, yeah.
Right.
It is, it does make maneuverability a little slower, more.
Does it?
Time-consuming. Well, yeah, that, I mean, whenever we reduce the width of lanes, that makes drivers slow down.
Right, but if you're not going from 20, if you're going from 24 to 20, you're going like five miles an hour.
But now you're trying to turn into a narrow driveway to get into your garage. So going even slower, and that's fine, this is a low turnover, low-volume situation, right? So that's all in support of that. But it does make people crank to go slow.
It may make them go cranky, but we're consistent. We are consistent. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm with you. I think if, I mean, Mr. Curly had reasons he wants to say about why it couldn't be narrowed. I think other than the turning radius, I don't see why it couldn't be narrowed for homeway type of pattern.
The north-south driveways have, I have underground detention in them.
Stormwater.
Stormwater management. And I need the porous pavement to.
Okay.
On the north-south driveways.
Well, see, there's a reason.
Well, you're, you're meeting the green criteria by having cores, there's not these statistics saying that you need to have an X amount of drive aisle. You wouldn't like your, I mean, your, your, maybe your treatment devices are on the west side, obviously.
They just go one way.
And you have sidewalk on the west side.
Just get that one.
This would be the one.
So it's not a question of.
It's not, that one, yes, yeah, no, because you could then you have.
It's not area, it's, right, okay. Can it be under the driveway?
So, all right. All right, what are we, what are we thinking?
So Mr. Curly, you've heard some of the discussion. If you want to just kind of address it in turn, would reducing the drive aisles to one-way provide any additional maneuverability for the two end units, the two corners of Kingsley as far as backing up?
Absolutely.
If you, if you reduce the drive aisles?
Absolutely. I, I mean, I'm not sure what the board is thinking, if it's 18 feet in width. I mean, that, that's the length of the vehicle, so now you have the vehicle backing out, it would, I mean, on all of them, all of them will be a three-point turn unless you're at the intersection.
Hey, what about, so if you get into, I don't mind a spit, I don't mean to spitball while we're doing this, I'm not the designer.
But that's what we're doing.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm trying to throw like my little asterisk, I'm not the design engineer. But if you kept the north-south, the same drive aisle, and maybe you couldn't, you already have sidewalk on the west side. So if you couldn't do sidewalk on that east side, could you lower the east-west going into and out of Webb, and you would gain sidewalk on all of those buildings, number one and four?
So the, the intent for the sidewalk was to be able to have sidewalk for someone coming out of their front door and the ability for them to walk along the street and/or, or circulate however they need to circulate. The intent was not to have sidewalk internal adjacent to the driveways.
Just to play devil's advocate, what if you're in building, any of the buildings, and you're going to get your mail? Where are you going? You have to go inside, you have to go along with the driveway, you have to. You're not going around, it's internal.
That's correct.
Doesn't that happen like every parking lot? You go to web, you walk down the.
No, no, I completely understand.
Parking lots aren't designed for that, they should be designed better. So you're not wrong, and it's a low volume, so it's, it's not like it's super, like it's a regular street, but you could do more of these things. And the turning radius, I think there was some stormwater and stuff, I would say, which probably the sands addressed, but it seemed like that's a big reason why it couldn't be narrowed.
Again, the north-south drives, I would, I would strongly recommend.
Yeah, I would agree with you on that, that one should be probably wider.
The east-west, I think that they could probably be narrowed.
And then would you give those, would you give that two feet back to each one of those residents on their driveway? Because you took two feet away from their driveway, right? Or am I wrong?
It would go into like an apron if you were to now do.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Right, so each, so each resident would get their two feet back that you just took back over these past couple of weeks.
I might make a slightly reasonable suggestion that seeing as it would be the east-west that would be narrowed, you could return that four feet all on one side and essentially have a landscape buffer.
That's true.
On the opposite side, prevent, you know, kind of creating a buffer between cars that are backing up and pedestrians moving east-west in this direction. So that would be a suggestion, rather than splitting the difference, take it all and mass it on one side.
That makes sense.
Rather than the other.
Was that?
I would say the same on the north side of that building.
Correct, yeah, I'm sorry, it's this side and this side. And so you get essentially a planted buffer.
Right, more green space.
Yeah, along here, and these backing, these cars backing up essentially now have something, a physical barrier or some.
I still want the sidewalk, so you can get to the central sidewalk to get out to Kingsley.
So if I can make a suggestion.
It creates a pattern of, you know, movement that connects all of this together.
If I can make a suggestion, Mr. Curly needs a moment to discuss this with.
Absolutely.
The applicant. So if either we take a moment or you durn for a few minutes, we'll have this discussion very quickly and come right back to you.
Okay. Okay. Well, go ahead.
No, I guess go, yeah, let's do that first.
Yeah, let's do that first.
Okay.
So let's just, let's just take a moment.
Five-minute break?
Yeah, let's do a five-minute break early, while they're chatting, while they chit-chat.
Excellent.
Okay? So, motion to take a five-minute break.
So moved.
All papers?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and we're back. I will now take roll call.
We're back.
James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Eric Gallobo.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman is absent, Mayor Moore.
Here.
Daniel Shinameo absent, Jen Souter.
Here.
Vice Chair Gunean.
Here.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Here.
Thank you for that moment.
Sterling.
I'm going to attempt to summarize where we came out, and then I'll ask Mr. Curley if I got it correct.
Okay.
So, we can agree to reduce the two drive aisles, the east-west drive aisles, to one-way traffic if it turns out that a garbage truck can still maneuver. We have concerns about garbage trucks still maneuvering. So the condition could be if the garbage truck can still maneuver, we can reduce that drive aisle, those drive aisles down, and the additional space would be landscaped. And Mr. Curley, did I get that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that would only apply to the two east-west drive aisles, not the two north-south drive aisles, correct?
That's correct.
And, and Mr. Curley, is it true then that if we are able to reduce it, that would mean every resident would have to do a three-point turn to get out of their driveway?
If your building is one in four, that's correct.
That would depend on how much you reduce it by, I mean, the number hasn't been thrown out there, so to just say that isn't, I don't believe that that's correct. I mean, if you reduced it by two feet.
Oh, two's not a problem.
Just to play, I mean, you're testifying to it, you know what I mean, so that's all.
My thought was that, based upon, it was looking at something like an 18-foot.
I agree, so is there maybe, maybe they would come to like a compromise, is there a minimum, if Mr. Curley can't come up with X amount of feet, is there a minimum that you'd like to see, is it four feet for landscaping?
It's not, it's, my concern is just to make sure that we're using the space the most, the best way we can.
Sure.
And do I want to have every, every person in two buildings have a problem? No, I don't. But.
It's like 24.
It's 24 right now.
So if we're drafting a condition, we would agree that those two drive aisles can go to one way, and they will be reduced by an amount that still leaves the ability for a trash truck to come through and for the residents to be able to pull out without having to all make three-point turns.
Right, we don't want, we don't want everybody making three-point turns, we already have those poor people in the corners doing that.
And the, any additional space that is picked up at that point will then be landscaped.
Will be added to landscape.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Alright.
Just before Bob runs up, Mayor Moore.
Oh, he's not going anywhere. Go ahead, you go, you go.
Mayor Moore, I just did hear someone in the audience bring up the fire apparatus, obviously we'll look into that. And there are no fire hydrants internally, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Buildings are sprinkled.
No, I just wanted, it was brought up, I just wanted to put it out there, yes.
There's fire hydrants that do surround them. Surround the block. Absolutely.
Now, have we, and I don't think we have, but have we spoken about stormwater management? And I think Mr. Curley would be doing that?
We did during the last meeting, right at the end.
Yeah, I heard just like this, a little something, it was like a little mention, it was like a moment.
Sure.
Because, because I like, I like my stormwater management, so, so if you don't mind, can we talk about stormwater management? Are we okay?
Yes.
Sam, you're okay?
Yes, Bob, if you'd like to just explain it once more, and I'll go through.
So we're providing underground, underground detention and in, to meet the DEP requirements for providing water quality for this motor vehicle surface that we're creating for the drive aisles, we are installing Filterra units, and those are BMP structures that have a planted tree in it, and it treats the water prior to going into the underground basin, and then it discharges out into the new system that will be constructed.
Alright, so that new system is going into where, Deal Lake? Or Sunset, or where's it going?
No, that is Deal Lake, water body. So Bob and his team are designing two basins underground. They do meet what you just said, they do meet all stormwater quantity, water quality through the BMPs, the manufacturing treatment devices, he also does comply, I just, he did not mention it, it was fine. Groundwater recharge, he does not need to comply with to where he is, the redevelopment zone, but they do have a percolating system for their water, which is just a positive, it's, it's nice to provide, so it's a plus.
And these treatment devices, do, are these, do they have to be cleaned?
They have to be maintained.
Alright, who's doing that?
So a part of the agreement would be that a deed, it's either done to be a deed, well, as a homeowner association, I believe, you're in charge of doing it in this case, but it will be a maintenance, operation maintenance procedure will be submitted prior to finalization.
To whom? That was submitted to the board with our application.
And within that, the specifications of the manufacturer of that device will state X, Y, and Z, but part of that is cleaning, a part of it is maintaining the soil, a part of it is, you know, making sure the vegetation is still alive, there's many.
Okay, alright, so is this anything like the manufactured treatment devices we have all over town? Or is this something different?
Completely different.
Completely different, okay.
The idea of it is more so to collect water and it's treated via the root system of the vegetation that's planted there.
So you're happy?
Yes, and I think.
Alright, you got my back?
Yes.
Alright, good. Alright.
And we have already submitted this to the DEP, they provided their initial comments, and they're in what we believe to be final review.
And we have a lighting plan?
Yes.
Yes.
And we're happy.
Well, actually, before we jump to lighting.
Okay, go ahead.
Sam and I had one ask left on the grading. In the front yards, we, those planted areas, we'd really like, instead of that, you know, 29%-ish slope, since you have some exposed foundation, that that be reconfigured so that we have more of a flat planting area. I don't care if you actually take some of that out, you know.
We can't comment on that.
So that we have a better bed, and it's not so sloped.
The applicant can agree to that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there any minimum, maximum?
No, they're just, the maximum speed slopes for dialing, but yeah, so 30% is your max, they're at 28. They're pretty much at their max now. So bringing it down a little bit, to Donna's point, would just benefit the planning.
Okay, now lighting.
Right, I believe Mr. Curley touched upon the lighting plan last time. The testimony about, the lighting plan currently shows both the onsite lighting and the street, proposed street lighting, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, so there's no spillage beyond?
Well, the plan we have.
The perimeter.
Has some spillage, and we have the wrong color temperature spec, so.
So it's going to be 2700?
That's correct.
Alright, so that's going to go down to 2700, no spillage.
And I did prepare an exhibit, I did not submit it to the board, but I wanted to make sure myself, if I turned off all of the street lights, was there any spillage past our property, and there was not.
Okay, that's what we're concerned about, and I understand that there'll be some with streetlights and all that, but as long as on the property, we're no, we're not, no spillage?
Sam and I have gotten very good at using the meter lately.
Good. Good. And the colors, you mentioned that one of the things that you changed, modified since the last meeting were colors. Are we going to see something, or is that the planner's going to do that, or what's going to happen?
I'll have Mr. Barry show, it's, just to be clear, it's the same colors.
The palette.
The same palette, hasn't changed, just in the back, it was previously one color. Now it will incorporate more than one of the same colors within the palette.
So the front is going to be the same as the back, or the back is going to be the same as what's on the front?
It'll have the same color palette, right, and the exhibit that we submitted shows how it could vary.
Right. The rating, we didn't get an architectural exhibit.
We, we did submit that to the board on the 17th.
That didn't come to us, sorry.
We'll have Mr. Barry show that on the screen, but we did, we did submit it on the 17th to the board.
Yeah, if you could show that, that would be great. Okay, is there anything else that, are there any other things that you'd like to bring up?
Not on engineering.
I have two questions.
Go ahead.
First, so you rotated that whole building once in a thousand, thank you for doing that. And I'm doing the math in my head, and I have this 50-foot setback, 12-foot sidewalks, and we're 27 feet from the curb. How does that compare to the home across West Street? Are we, are we maintaining the view corridor now, are we close?
Might be better for the planner to testify to with his massing exhibit.
I can, I can ask that question to Mr. Barry.
Okay. And then the other thing I had was, you had given us exhibits last time about cars entering and exiting the car lights. We never went over them, and you have a good exhibit, so if we could just go over those, that'd be helpful.
Just have to pull those up one moment. So I do believe we marked this one as A7 last time.
So, the testimony that I provided was that the roadway elevation and where we would be exiting out of is approximately six feet lower than the finished floor of the existing dwelling. And when you look at the profile, and this profile is done. This is getting me good. So the profile's done at a one-to-one scale, and there's a definite possibility that a vehicle could be parked in front of our driveway, because there are two parallel parking stalls. Not saying that, that, that would have to happen, however, the lights, the lights again are, would be approximately four and a half feet below the finished floor of the dwelling.
Just as a follow-up, so now assuming we have one-way circulation, there's only one exit. Does that, that northern driveway would be under that? What is that across, is it across from a garage, is it across from a house?
No, there's a, there's a dwelling, there's definitely a dwelling there. I don't want to speak exactly to, this looks like, I mean, it could be a bedroom, not quite sure. Or a den. But there's a, there's an access, there's stair access, right in the room, I have the cursor right now.
You can see it there, Mike, on the, on the upper right-hand side, those two, those two windows.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just walked by there today, I just wasn't sure how this aligned, so it's.
So that's, that would be.
So it's the bottom of that, right?
Correct.
The bottom, the floor. Any, any other questions from the board for our witness?
I do have one more, and it's one of those questions, it's not really a question that's not relevant, but are there going to be benches and bike racks as part of the street state?
Yes, there will.
Any other questions from either the professionals or board members to our engineer? Anything? You guys satisfied with the answers? You're good? Okay, alright, let's open it up to the public for questions, for, to our engineer on anything that he testified to today, and I believe that because he didn't do that last time, we do it for what was asked for last time as well.
That's correct.
For Mr. Curley.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Curley, for your testimony, I appreciate it. Elaine Rocha, 301 Seventh Avenue.
Can you speak for the mic player?
Please.
Quarter of Seventh.
Raise that, it's kind of soft. If possible, I don't want you to see if end over.
I'm a soft speaker, but, okay. I'll speak louder, is that better?
That's good, right in there.
Oh, it just dropped.
Alright, um, got it? Okay. Thanks for your testimony. Back to the September 23rd meeting, there was a brief touch point on remediation plans for soil contamination. I haven't seen any documents with regard to those plans currently in terms of has there been groundwater contamination, the extent of the soil contamination, is there possible third-party property damage, meaning could it leak off the site? What's the plan once you start constructing into the ground? And for full transparency, I was an environmental coverage lawyer for about 15 years with regard to environmental and property damage, so I'm well-versed in this space, and I haven't seen any remediation plans. So for the record, I'd like to see those plans or understand the extent of the damage. Do you acknowledge the extent of the remediation? Is there going to be a witness? There is not planning to be a witness, no, the, this, the site, as I understand it, will be clean to any applicable standards that apply to residential development. Well, for the record, I'd like to see that plan, please. So we have not submitted a remediation plan to the planning board, it's not something that's required. We, we don't typically do that, it is according to an LSRP that those plans are submitted to, not the planning board. Okay, Mr. Curley, can you just find what low volume means? I think you were talking about low volume in terms of the traffic in and out, I mean, with 45 units, arguably two cars, that doesn't seem like low volume to me, so is there a definition behind that, or just some clarity in terms of low volume?
From, from an overall development standpoint, this is a much lower impact than what would potentially, what could potentially be built on the site. My comment about lower volume, volumes of traffic is that for residential units like this, it's not that everyone's going to be coming and going all at the same time. Certainly, there are, there are 45 units, but they're going to be spread out over the morning hours, during the middle of the day. Again, it would be a much lower volume than, let's just say, a multifamily eight-story structure that could potentially be built with the driveway entrance on Web Street.
Will you state that again? You can't, I've read the master plan forward and backwards, and you can't build eight stories on Web?
I didn't say on Web, but there could be eight stories along Kingsley Street.
Okay, we understand that. Okay, so my next question is, with regard, we've spoken extensively in terms of the entrance and egress of this development, with Seventh Avenue, Eighth Avenue, and Kingsley, I want to understand what was the reasoning or the discussion behind putting it on a one-way street? Because, if I may, because we opened up the discussion here, if you look at a brand-new development on Burke between Second and Third, that's a one-way street, and there's, I think, maybe one point of exit on Burke, I couldn't tell because there was construction, but certainly not two points of entrance and egress on a one-way street. So can you walk me through the logic as opposed to using a Seventh Avenue or Eighth Avenue entrance and egress? And has there been a traffic study?
So as part of the overall waterfront redevelopment, there was a traffic, traffic impact statement that was completed for for the overall redevelopment, and it accommodated not only the vehicular movements on the streets, but also the required parking. And that's, that was the basis for providing for one and a half parking stalls per dwelling unit throughout the waterfront redevelopment zone. And it accommodated all the existing parking that's out there today. From a, from a design standpoint, with an island in the middle of the, the proposed roads, you would be forcing circulation for someone that would potentially have to loop around the whole block. And we felt that that was an optimum situation.
Okay, just, and also for the record, there's a development that's been in place since 2009, Wesley Grove, and they have one-way streets on either side, they have an entrance on one one-way street and an exit on the other one-way street. So they do not, similarly, you'd be hard-pressed to find a development in town that has entrance and egress onto a one-way street. So for the record, I'm stating my objection.
And there is access onto Wesley Lake Drive.
I would just ask if we could keep this section to questions and not comments.
This is a question, please cross-examine, don't, don't go, don't testify.
Yep, for sure. When you were, I don't know, did you design, you're the civil engineer, who's the person who actually did the aesthetic design? That was the architect who's already. Well, you did that in terms of the setback, we're talking about the setback now, who, I think we talked about it here, civil engineer. The shifting of Seventh Avenue and the setback? This, I'm, sorry, I don't, I don't understand, are you talking about the buildings or the? The buildings, we just talked about it. The rotation of the buildings. The buildings, we just talked about the setback in terms of 15 feet, so is that 15 feet from the sidewalk?
That's correct.
Okay. I have a copy of my survey, if you want to take a look. I have a copy of my survey, if you want to take a look.
Show it, show it to the attorney first. And whose survey is that?
This is my survey. Unfortunately, it's the small, it's a small.
But we don't know the relationship to it.
And where's your, where's that one?
301 Seventh Avenue.
You're on the opposite side of Webb Street.
Correct.
Okay.
Also, my driveway is directly across from the small.
Yeah. I've been asking. Where are you looking?
I don't know.
Oh, you're just trying to figure it out. So she's saying that it's 28.9?
I have an email, I can send it to me.
No, 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 no. Now's the time, and here's the place.
It's 18 feet.
Yeah, is it 28, 28.9? That's probably right, the property.
I have no objection to a question being asked about it, but I don't, we can't actually read the setbacks on it. But if you have a question for Mr. Curley?
Why don't we hear your question?
I was trying, you asked a question in terms of whether the sightline or the view corridor has now been preserved or preserved effectively with moving the development back by 15 feet. And I was trying to show that it doesn't. So, and then also, with regard to the Burke Street development, I have two photos of the sightline.
That's irrelevant. Burke Streets, why are we bringing in Burke Street to this application?
It's a new development, and it has a preserved sightline. Whereas the sightline for my...
No.
I think that's more...
The reason I ask the question is because the sidewalk and the curb are going to move. But I don't really understand 100% where the sidewalk and curb are going to move to, but I know it's going to end up 27 feet from the new curb. Which is the best thing to do?
Burke Street, what we've done on other applications, there's a lot of reasons for things being done on individual applications. So that doesn't mean that we would adhere to that standard throughout the entire district. So that's what we did over on Burke Street, it's irrelevant to Webb Street in this project. This project stands on its own four corners. So either it's validated or not. If you want to challenge the validation, that's one thing, but Burke Street isn't, isn't relevant.
With all due respect, councilors, trying to drive home the point that if you do drive around town and you look at all the other developments, they are...
But this, I accept your objection.
Any other questions from the public? Yes.
Karen May, 301 Eighth Avenue, so catty corner to the development. You talked about the shrubs and the headlight concern. You said that the shrubs are going to be on that, going out to Seventh and going out to Eighth, where that little, what do you call it, a seating wall?
That's correct.
And then there's going to be some shrub there, that they would be 30 inches high.
At planting, yes.
At planting, so that's this high. Right, at planting. Right?
At planting.
And an SUV headlights are this high. Right? So people have an SUV, if you have an SUV, or a lot of vehicles today are going to be sitting up higher than here. So at planting, yes, they're going to be 30 inches. So we would have to wait for people who are across from that and for the headlight overflow. We would then, you're saying we would have to wait a few years until the plantings grow to a higher elevation? Am I understanding that right? Do we have to be patient for a few years?
To be larger than 30 inches, that's right.
To be larger than 30 inches. And that assumes, then, that within the master deed plan, is there going to be a direction to the master deed to say you have to allow that to grow higher than 30 inches, and you can't keep trimming it down to 30 inches? If the goal is to keep the headlights out, you have the master deed, and the instructions to whoever is the HOA would have to have the rules to keep that up higher and allow it to grow.
So I guess that the, I don't know that we know the maximum height, but the idea is that it would grow from 30 inches and continue to grow up from there to whatever its normal maturity height is.
Yeah, but I have, I have shrubs at my own house. I can choose, you know, when people say, "How tall are they going to get?", I can choose to keep them trimmed down and keep them at 30 inches, or I can allow them to grow. Once you guys are gone and the HOA takes over, is it not up to them to say, "I want it at 30 inches, or I want it to grow to 40 or 50 inches?" And allow it to grow to a higher height? And so without that stipulation, we can say it here now, but that doesn't mean that's what's going to happen five years from now. So if the concern is for that light spillage and out into other properties, I just want to understand that we're going to have something that will live in perpetuity when all of us are out of the room, your construction is done, and you guys are long gone, and we're left living with what is there?
Yeah. So I think if the question is having it grow at least at 36...
Not under...
No, I know, just trying. My issue is I can't answer, but the, I think if the goal is to have them grow to over 36 inches, that they can be maintained over 36 inches.
Well, I can, I can't say. I'll say something later.
Yeah.
Okay. Elaine already brought up the low volume, 45 units, two cars apiece, that's 90 cars, low volume. I know you responded to that around the traffic impact statement that was done with the waterfront redevelopment plan. So that was from 2002, 22 years ago. Correct?
And it has been updated.
The traffic study?
That's correct.
Is that available for the public to see?
It was not submitted in connection with this application, because it's not required. This is a permitted use. So as a permitted use, we are not required to do a traffic study for this individual application.
So Webb Street does not deserve, with two entrances, or an entrance and an egress, whatever your words are for that, Webb Street doesn't deserve a traffic study. And when you talk about, "Oh, that's okay, because it's a low impact inside this two-acre, less-than-two-acre lot",
No.
To have 90 cars potentially, it's 8 o'clock in the morning, you're going to work, that doesn't deserve a greater consideration, because the redevelopment plan actually assumed that most people who bought into this would take public transportation.
They testified.
No, I'm asking the question, why we don't have a traffic study? But the question is, why is there not a traffic study for this development?
I can answer, right, I can answer that question, and that is...
The answer, I believe that, I've spoken to the planner and the engineer, I believe the traffic studies that have been done for the city are public record, and they are accessible to the public, but they're not part of this application.
Correct.
So they are available.
They've been updated since 2002?
Within, he said that they have been subsequently amended and updated. So I assume there's somewhere within the city, I just don't know where.
And, and as a permitted use, we are not required to submit a traffic study for this block or for any block, and not just this applicant, any applicant in the city. If it's a permitted use, they are not required to submit a traffic study in connection with site plan.
Is wow a question? All right, then, I guess we'll move on, since we have no say in traffic and how cars are going to flow on a one-way street. Stormwater, you got to help me here, I, a lot of that was all Greek to me. So filtration units and BMT structures, I got it, that helps with the water quality, right? Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay. The volume and capacity of whatever drainage, you know, is there a study done to say how much water is going to be displaced by putting building structures and paving and that other stuff, and losing a lot of green on this less-than-two-acre lot? Is there a water study, any sort of stormwater study that says, "Here's how much drainage you have to have so that it's not coming out to all of us in the rest of the neighborhood"?
That stormwater management report was submitted with the application. We provide the flow reductions as mandated by the, it's the DEP that's regulating this. So we are reducing rainwater runoff from the site over, over from what it exists today.
So that's the two basins underground?
That's correct.
That you refer to, and that defines the capacity of those two basins underground?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you help me with percolating system?
It's not required for this application.
Okay. The definition? I don't know what it is. To me, percolating is a cup of coffee.
It's not required for this application.
Oh, okay. I thought you said you had percolating systems. In final review with the DEP, is that, when will that review be completed to make sure that we've got the proper drainage for here? Because in your applic, in one of, in several, actually, I've seen it twice, in the documents that you submitted, it said that you were requesting a waiver for stormwater variance. And I was, I don't, I didn't understand what that meant, and so that is also my question as to what is the waiver for?
The waiver that is being requested was, so the city ordinance has a requirement to provide the stormwater management that exists on all the streets around the perimeter and within 200 feet of the site. Those, those...
Okay.
Those plans have been submitted to the city for upgrading the overall infrastructure for the entire north end of town.
Okay.
And that's, that information has been submitted to the city. So that's the waiver that we're requesting, not to show all of those improvements, although they are on my plans.
Okay.
It's, it's not to show everything within 200 feet.
Okay.
That was the waiver that was requested.
Not to show everything, so the water, there was a mention of the water goes to Deal Lake?
That's correct.
So how does it get from this lot? It's more than 200 feet to get over to Deal Lake. How does the water go that way?
So that's part of the infrastructure improvement plans that are, that have been submitted to the city for the, again, the overall north end. There's going to be, Webb Street's going to be completely reconstructed. There's going to be a new stormwater outfall pipe that's going to go down Webb Street to Deal Lake.
Okay.
With the water quality.
Okay. So by, excuse me? By the master developer.
That's correct.
Part of the overall infrastructure improvement.
That's correct.
Not this project doing that. Okay. So then the stormwater study takes, assumes that that stuff is going to happen, though, by that master developer. And I'm assuming that the master developer for this, is it a correct assumption, there's my question, is it a correct assumption that they've taken into consideration that right now in a heavy storm, Deal Lake overflows? And it comes down Webb towards your development?
So the master developer has submitted the plans that are compliant with the CAF permit, which takes into account the entire waterfront area. Those plans have been reviewed by the city. The DEP, when it's reviewing these individual applications, is taking into account not just what's happening in the four corners of the site, but overall, how is it, how it ties into the infrastructure. Bob, did I summarize that correctly? Okay.
So they're the ones who look at, I'll call it the cup runneth over. Okay? So when you add 14 units at Rhythm, and we add developments in all these places from, from where Rhythm is to Delta to the Views, and then you have Deal Lake, the impact of all of those things, we don't look at them individually, they are looked at in the aggregate.
The benefit is...
Because at some point, the cup starts to run over.
The benefit of having a master redeveloper is the ability to have that coordinated infrastructure. This application pertains to what's in the four corners of the property, but as we've said, the master developer has an infrastructure program with the city by contract, and it's been building it out over time. And this section, the city approved updated plans just last week, will, is part of that infrastructure improvement program.
And it considers the basins and all the stuff that Mr. Curley described earlier in terms of capturing the water, where it's going to go over to Deal Lake and all that stuff?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else, any of us in the public have questions for Mr. Curley?
Hi, good evening. Mary Velino, 1700 Webb Street. I want to thank you all for your time and everybody's input, because it's really cool that we have a city that we can do this and have these discussions that hopefully are going to bring us to appropriate progress in our town. I've been listening and reading, and I understand we're going to have marvelous 11-foot sidewalks on any given place, as I understand it. Is that correct, Mr. Curley? 11, 12 feet at different places?
On Webb Street, yes.
Right, from there. And I believe you testified last month at the meeting that there is no grass on this entire project, not on the sidewalks, not on the berms. I do have a question. Are we pet-friendly? This building, are we building it to be pet-friendly?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think Mr. Curley testified about...
Right. All right, well, I'm going to assume, being a dog town, that if this project proceeds, the question is, if you are dog-friendly, is there any consideration for putting some grass back? We're decreasing driveways, picking up two feet here, four feet here. I'd like to respectfully request that we ask you to put some kind of dog relief program inside your compound, because you're coming then out. So that's a question. Would you consider, because we have to, like Jeopardy here, we have to frame it appropriately, are we in fact have, would we consider putting some kind of pet relief? Because this project is going to come to our surrounding neighborhoods where we still have a speck of grass. So again, question, would you consider that?
It's not part of our current design.
But would you consider that, knowing that you're building 40-some-odd units?
Mr. Curley's can't answer what you consider.
Okay, so if you're the appropriate person or the master, I'm not sure who speaks to what here. So I'm here about the grass for the puppies, because in turn, you're sending them across to Seventh, across the Webb, across to Kingsley, so just a, just a consideration there. Have another question.
If I may, just, I don't want to extend this too far, but part of the improvements that the council just approved are the bump outs at the corners, at the four corners of this particular building. But it's going to be throughout the north end of the waterfront redevelopment. Those corners are going to have grassed areas, so...
So it's okay to push the outside onto the public domain?
I'm telling you what was recently approved by the council.
Okay, great. Now, sir, you always comment that you could build eight stories. On Kingsley, as we know, Webb, you cannot. We all know after four, you go from sticks to stone and steel, so your cost goes up.
You testified.
I testified.
What's the question?
So is it, is it more expensive to build eight stories than it is four, sir?
I don't, I don't think Mr. Curley can answer that as the engineer.
Well, he's an engineer, right?
He's not an architect.
An architect, okay. So again, making that assumption, it's as if you're giving us a break by not building eight stories.
You testified.
Right.
You can comment, you can make the comments at the end.
Thank you. I would respectfully ask about grass for our dogs, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Curley?
Mike Sazork, 305 Eighth Avenue. I came in a little bit late, so I'm going to miss this, but I think there was an open question to Mr. Curley about the width of Eighth Avenue, and I think someone had asked, "What's the actual width of Eighth Avenue, and is it going to get smaller?". I think that was an outstanding question.
So there's going to be an island constructed, and the, the new sidewalk, the new sidewalk width on Eighth Avenue will be 10 feet in width, in addition to a grassed island that'll be installed in the middle. And that's part of the overall infrastructure, not part of this application.
Got it. The question, I think, was like curb-to-curb, you know, what, the street now versus what's going to be put there, I think was the...
It's going to be completely different, because there's an island that's going to be constructed. And again, that's all part of the infrastructure improvement plans. That's not part of this application.
Could you say that curb-to-curb is even substantially wider?
That's correct.
So the, disregarding the island, the curb on the, you know, going west is going to, you know, west to the east side, curb-to-curb, it's going to be wider than it currently is.
So the island is going to be 16 feet width. The total paint width for Eighth Avenue, which will include an 18-foot parking aisle, would be 32 feet. So the drive aisle for vehicles going in a one-way direction is going to be 14 feet wide, and then would be back-end parking, again, would be 32 feet total on one side.
One side, got it.
With a 16-foot aisle and a 32 feet on the other side. With a 16-foot aisle and a 32 feet on the other side.
Got it, so you're talking 64 feet plus 16 is curb-to-curb, which is what I'm asking.
Correct.
Got it. And that compares to what, what's currently there?
I, I don't want to, I don't want to give that-
Whatever, whatever, compared to what's there. Correct.
So it's, it's going to be the same?
It's going to be bigger.
Bigger.
He just, yeah, he just testified it was going to be bigger.
Okay. All right, great. Second question, is the planning board approving, or I don't know if this is Mr. Curly, but the consolidation of the lots for the remediation purposes?
It's not a question for him, but that's part of the application.
Given that, I mean, I'd like to echo, you know, the commentary before, as a condition to approve the consolidation of the lots, a remediation plan of some sort being presented.
What type of remediation?
The, the contamination-
That's not the jurisdiction of this board. The applicant has to comply with whatever the New Jersey DEP requires for any kind of soil contamination. It's completely out of the jurisdiction of this board. You can contact DEP and find out about what's going on with the property.
Got it.
But it's really not, they can subdivide the land, reconsolidate the lots, has nothing to do with the remediation.
Right, but it's subject to the planning board's approval, right? The consolidation of the lots.
The remediation?
The consolidation of the lots.
The consolidation, yes. The remediation, no.
Right, so I'm, so the planning board cannot put a condition upon, you know, approving the lot consolidation, that they have to submit some sort of remediation plan as part of that?
No.
No, because that's the department, that's DEP.
Got it.
New Jersey DEP. And, and what they're proposing for the configuration of the new consolidated lot complies with the lot requirements in the waterfront redevelopment regulations, so they're creating a conforming lot. So, yes, the board will approve that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Be able to approve that. Sorry, don't want to speak for you guys. We are able to approve that, yes.
And Jack, quick, we have a condition in every single, every single application we approve that has to comply with DEP.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Absolutely.
The requirements are there, on every single approval that we do.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anything else from, uh?
I'm back.
So who does the, when, who talks-
What's the question?
Karen May, 301 Eighth Avenue. The construction plan, because if, I remember right, the Interfaith people had a construction plan that was talked about. Who does the construction plan?
The construction and logistics plan was approved as part of the subsequent developer agreement by the, by the council.
Okay, so the actual plan of how they're going to do the construction, how they're going to protect dust and things like that from us neighbors, doesn't get discussed here? That's discussed somewhere else, and we don't have any say in it?
Construction staging. Yeah, so the, the construction staging plan, as far as sidewalk closures, et cetera, was part of the subsequent developer agreement that was approved by council, and we're, the applicant is contractually bound to do what he promised to do as far as following the construction phasing.
Okay, it's construction phasing, but it's, okay. So in the waterfront, it's a little different than a, a regular development application, like a spring? Okay, okay, thank you. So is there any way we can see what that might look like, so that we know what we're getting into, if this should start to move forward at some point in time?
Yeah, it's, it's an exhibit to the adopted subsequent developer agreement. That would be unfiled with the clerk's office. There's that, there's an actual exhibit.
Oh, yeah. Is it in the package?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the answer's yes.
Okay. It's, it is on file already with the clerk's office.
Any other questions from the public? Okay, your next, your next, uh-
Great.
Witness.
All right, so our final witness is our planner, John Barry.
Good evening.
I think Mr. Barry needs to be sworn, and then I'll ask him-
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
John Barry, B-A-R-R-E.
Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Barry, I'm going to ask you a few introductory questions, and then ask the board to qualify you as an expert in the field of professional planning. So if you could please summarize your education background, experience, and licensure.
Sure. I have a Master of City and Regional Planning degree from Rutgers University, and I've been practicing as a professional planner in New Jersey for just over a decade now. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and a licensed planner in New Jersey since 2014, and I'm a principal with the firm, hired, grown, and associates. I've testified before this board, before in the past, and many other boards throughout the state.
So I would like to offer Mr. Barry as an expert in the field of professional planning.
That's great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
So, we need to, to mark the massing model, Jen, as a-
Sure, so we submitted this massing model with our last submission, but we can go ahead and mark it as Exhibit A10, I believe we're up to.
Sure.
Mr. Barry, if you could just tell us what it is for the record.
Sure. So the A10 is a 15-slide massing model prepared by my office, I'll run through briefly, that shows the general size of the proposed development and context on the block, and then compares it to what's permitted under the redevelopment plan. So we've been through enough orientation, I don't think I need to, to belabor the point, but we've got Seventh Avenue bottom left, Eighth Avenue top right, Kingsley in the bottom right, and Webb on the top left. And this shows the layout that was testified to by Mr. Curly this evening with the additional setback area at the corner of Seventh and Webb, and the four-story buildings around the perimeter of the development and in the center, and then the three-story buildings at Webb Street. The second slide shows a general bulk mass of what could be permitted, what would be permitted under the waterfront redevelopment plan, with the eight-story portions along Kingsley Street, the lower view shed area through the center of the block, which is common in the redevelopment plan, and then the four-story and three-story portions on Webb. This shows a dashed outline of those masses superimposed over what's being proposed in this project, just to give a sense of the variation in scale from what's permitted under the plan to what's being proposed here this evening. This flips us around, just gives a same, same view of the proposed mass, but from different direction. We've got Eighth Avenue, and Seventh, and Webb Street in the foreground. And again, comparison of the massing that would be permitted and the superimposed boxes over the proposed townhouse development. This brings us a little bit lower, gives us a look at that corner of Seventh and Kingsley with the, with the massing, and you can see the tapering down Seventh Avenue as we've set the buildings back and aren't following the straight line, but are creating the more of the opening to preserve the view shed. And then similarly, what could be permitted with a, with an eight-story mass, and again, the superimposition. This is the view from Webb Street, and I'll flip over in just a moment to show the updated architectural package, but this is the, the general layout from Webb Street. You can see the enhanced green areas just shown in, in the diagram here. And again, the, the massing with the taller segments pushed back toward Kingsley that could be permitted under the plan, and the, the superimposed versions. And then briefly, a, a look at the Eighth Avenue side, same, same massing and the superimposed versions. So next, we'll move to the updated architectural renderings that were submitted. Do we need to mark these, Jen?
Should we mark them just for, so A11?
Okay.
These are submitted-
Is this consistent with the revised architectural?
Correct, yes.
Just laying that out, please.
Yep, so these, these architectural renderings were prepared and submitted as part of the, the resubmission before this hearing. They reflect the changes that have been made to the, the building setbacks, to the perimeter, the additional landscaping that's been provided, and, and the other changes that Mr. Curly testified to with regard to the site layout. So this is the view of Webb Street looking north. We've got some of the additional landscaping areas that you can see along the, the sides of the, the buildings closest to Webb Street that were added based on the additional setback that's been provided. And then you can note the features proposed on the corner buildings, the upper-story balconies with the pergola structures. Those were not part of the corner buildings along Webb Street previously, but have been added to match the Kingsley side. This is a view, Webb Street view from Eighth Avenue. You can get, really get a good look at those corners, so that it, there's symmetry now around the, the four corners of the property. Here's the view of Webb Street from mid-block, and we'll zoom in to indicate the variation on the color that's been provided on the back, and a little bit of the, the depth as well. Recall, the commentary had been that the, the back of the building was too uniform, so we broke up some of the color, and also the row of landscaping that was added helped soften the, the overall internal look. And then lastly, this is the view up from Seventh Avenue. We have that enhanced setback area to, to match the angle of the, the view shed as best we can with the site, and provide some more setback to Seventh Avenue and additional landscaping in that area. So with, so those are the, the two exhibits that I wanted to reference, just to, to provide some groundwork. Otherwise, from a planning standpoint, the proposal is consistent with the redevelopment plan in terms of permitted use. Terms of the bulk, we, we saw the massing models, it's less bulk than would be permitted under the plan at full buildout. The three-lot subdivision, which we've touched on this evening, provides conforming lot areas that will eventually be dissolved back into a single conforming lot at, at the conclusion of the development. But then there are several design exceptions that come from the, the architectural standards generally in the plan. And mostly reference what's been put forth in Ms. Miller's report, but Section 3.6B of the, the report has a, a rundown of the design exceptions. There's a exception for building articulation that focuses on the buildings not wrapping around the corner. We feel like we've been responsive to commentary both at the, the TRC, through the council process, and now through the board meetings to add some additional features of interest on the buildings themselves, enhance those setbacks and landscaped areas to do our best to give the corners the attention that they're being asked to have. The, um, those were kind of combined, in my mind, with the articulation and the building frontages. Ms. Miller has any disagreement on that, but I think that the architectural features we've added to the ends of the building, and to the tops particularly, help address those considerations. The, um, as projects often do, there, there is a waiver being sought for the, the color palette that's being proposed here. The plan calls for a very specific color palette in the yellow and red quadrant of the color wheel. As you can see, we've got a set of different greens and, and beiges that are kind of a seaside palette that's not consistent with what's proposed, but we don't feel it detracts from the intent and purpose of the redevelopment plan. There was a, some commentary about the utility meters not being effectively or fully, fully screened. We've made some modifications during the course of the hearings, there's been some improvements to the screenings, there may be some technical areas where they are still visible, but by and large, tucking the gas meters behind the sprinkler rooms was a positive step. And then we've got some landscaping in the, the knee wall to help shield the, the transformers. So there have been steps taken to mitigate what was identified as a waiver. We've got waivers for the, for the decks that are located on the, the back of the building that, that are cantilevered over the, the driveways and garages. Those are, um, not, not permitted to be more than three feet, so they're about six feet in depth, and they don't, they're not supported by brackets, which is required, they're just cantilevered out. So, um, both of those, we feel, are, are kind of immaterial to the overall scope of the project, and, and certainly a minor waiver there doesn't detract from, from the project. And then there's also a, a waiver for multiple balconies. The, each building has its own balconies, and the corner units have, have multiple balconies. And then there are the ones that cantilever over the garage area, so that's, technically, there's supposed to be a single balcony surrounding the whole project. I had a few others that I don't know that were called out in the CCH report, very briefly. There's a design exception for sliding doors, which are the doors that lead to those balconies. A design exception to permit flush-installed windows, which has been a common theme over many of the projects that have been approved. And then garage doors are exceeding a maximum width of nine feet. The corner buildings have two-car garages, so interior to the site, those garage doors exceed the permitted nine feet. And then lastly, the doors are not all wood, which is a requirement in the plan, so generally, those, those waivers, I feel, are, are similar to many that have been granted throughout the area and other projects, and none of them detract substantially from the intent and purpose of the redevelopment plan.
Those are all the questions that I have for Mr. Barry.
So can you go back to the Seventh Avenue setback now, as far as how it relates to the home zone of Seventh Avenue?
Yeah, so this is, what was this? I mentioned that.
Uh, this was Exhibit A8.
Eight, sorry, thanks. So back to, to A8, um, which, we don't, we don't have, unfortunately, we don't have the setback of Lot 9, which is immediately across the street. There is proposed-
For one second, you're interrupting. Was that shown on your survey, your setback?
Yes.
Do we have that here?
I, I hand it back, but, but if it's 18 feet-
Okay, so if, if the stipulation is that it's an 18-foot setback from Seventh Avenue?
To the porch. From your lot line?
Yeah, yeah.
To the porch.
Yeah, so-
John, you have an aerial exhibit.
I do, yeah.
That would probably-
I mean, it's, it'll be-
Shows the story so much better. Because it shows her house.
Right.
In relationship to-
So we will mark-
This is the old layout.
Right, but-
But you can draw a line, you know, you can visualize where that, where that has changed. And, and again, pan more to the west, because although her house is where it is, the houses next to hers, sorry.
Yeah, I know, I don't, I don't think they have any more to the west.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, those, some of those houses are, stick out more than hers, so there's a, you know, there's a lot to this view shed concept, it's not one particular building, and it, it varies along the street frontage, so.
And if you could zoom in to the, what the setback was there measured at?
So this was measured at eight feet.
And Mr. Curly just testified that that building is now over 15 feet back, so it moves back another seven feet.
Right, so 15, 15 and a half feet.
So if her house is 20 feet, then you're only five feet.
Well, her stipulation was that it is 18.9 feet, so it's about a 3.4-foot difference to, to the porch.
I'm on the porch side, I'm sorry. Can I get on the, on the other person, so I just have a mistake.
Right, and there'll be an opportunity for, for questions, I just don't want the record to be modeled.
So, so my understanding, then, is it's about similar to the setback of that building, Asburyian building?
Uh, yeah.
Is it roughly correct?
I, if, if not closer even, that, that building is setback, um, sorry, yeah, several feet up from the immediate adjacent property across Webb. Um, just, I know from having walked the area many times, too, that building does extend much closer to, to Seventh. So I think the bottom line with the, the view shed is that the redesign of the project has opened that corner up. It has made every effort within the bounds of the property to enhance the, the view shed along the corridor. And, you know, it, not having been required to do so by the plan, we're enhancing that, you know, based on, on the conversation we've had at the board.
Does that conclude the testimony?
I'm just seeing if there was any questions from the board or the public, but that's all the direct-
Are you glad it came from last time? Donna, you had mentioned we didn't have the calculations for void to solid, fenestration, something or other.
Yeah, I, I haven't gotten any updated calculations from the architect.
I, I believe that we can stipulate that both comply, and that updated calculations can be provided. That's, that's what mine had said, Jen, is that-
That's what I have in mind as well.
Yeah.
Was it void to solid?
Void to solid, and the minimum fenestration, so kind of of a pair, but yes.
Goes on Jack's list.
I've got a few questions to ask. You just enumerated about a dozen design exceptions that you have made on this plan, correct?
Uh, roughly that many, yes. Roughly that many, yes.
Well, how about telling us why those are needed? Why, there's, the waterfront redevelopment plan has design requirements. Why are you changing those requirements in this development?
Sure. So the waterfront redevelopment plan, as you're well aware, a very prescriptive set of design requirements that are now drafted 23 or so years ago. So I think, to a point, there has been some change in typical building materials that drive a few of the relief that we're seeking. And frankly, changes in some of the modern aesthetic that is desirable in certain areas. But as to some of the practical matters, we talked about it's impractical for townhouse buildings generally to wrap around a corner. So for this style of development, we're doing our best we can to address the articulation and the frontage by providing the features around the different corners that make them stand out and enhancing the landscaping with some of the additional setbacks that the engineer was able to make happen on the site with some of the movements of the buildings. I find the color limitation to be, you know, an interesting one, where the history of most places is not that they develop with a single color palette, and certainly, over time, they don't maintain that uniformity of color palette. So operating within a color palette that sticks with similar hues, that's not bright primary colors, but is, you know, in keeping with oceanfront aesthetic, I don't see any detriment to having something that's not simply red and yellow and orange. As far as the utility meters go, you heard testimony from the engineer and the architect about why certain things need to be placed where they are. Some accommodations have been made to make sure that the impacts of those features have been limited as much as possible. The rearrangement of the sprinkler rooms is limited in part by their placement relative to the interior garage for maintenance purposes. So you can only go so far with sliding those around, but we've done what we can to accommodate the requests from the board. And then, with the decks, there are an amenity that's certainly something that I think anyone buying a home in the area would want to have, and the various items of relief related to those decks don't detract from the project, from the streetscape, don't detract from the usability or livability of the project or the plan area as a whole. And then, things like sliding doors, I mean, honestly, to me, that's almost a personal preference than something that should be strictly prescribed. So taken as a whole, the standard isn't, you know, is there a possible alternative? But, you know, sometimes there's practicalities that need to be considered. And on the balance, is the relief rise to a level that is creating some kind of detriment? And my opinion is that these are all small things taken individually and certainly don't create any substantial detriment.
I just asked about the windows, because you didn't say, I think, windows is the one thing that you didn't touch on, the windows exception.
The--
The window sills?
I mentioned the flush-mounted windows, yeah.
Just because, it just says because it's present in other developments throughout the WRA.
Yeah. And it's just, it's a modern, sleek, modern design aesthetic, I think, is ultimately what it comes down to.
It's my understanding that when you went before the technical review committee, they suggested certain architectural styles, and this is entirely different than what that is. Is that correct? Is my understanding correct?
Well, I wasn't at the technical review committee meeting, so--
But I, the technical review committee asked us to make certain changes. We made some of those changes and presented--
Some of the changes we made, but many of the changes that were requested were ignored.
Is there a specific change that you think was not made? I just want to be specific.
The TRC did not ask to change the architectural style of the buildings.
Well, on page nine of your report, it indicates architectural styles within the general area of this development, and none of them look like this development.
That's my comment, that's not the TRC's comment.
Okay.
Yeah, this is an architectural style that's been kind of, you know, used a lot in the waterfront.
Exactly. It's been used a lot, and it doesn't--
But it was not a recommendation of the TRC or as part of the SDA to change the style of the building.
I stand corrected. Okay. And the design exceptions that you're asking for, listed on page two of this report. You've told me in general that this is your architectural preference, but it's not what the waterfront redevelopment plan requires. And I just want to know why the deviation. Basically, because you think your architect thinks this is a better plan? Is that the--
Yeah, I believe I just provided extensive testimony about each of the exceptions.
Well, you mentioned them, and you said this is what we think we ought to do.
Yeah.
It's just a preference for you? Personal preference?
No, the, so it's a design aesthetic that is something that's desirable to be built by the proposed developer. There are a number of projects in the area that have all different styles. We have a pipeline of projects that are in different stages of development that have, there's six-story largely glass modern buildings, there's development right across the street that's been reviewed by the council that's going to have very much a Mediterranean aesthetic that's very consistent with what's called for in the redevelopment plan. I think my broader point is that adhering to the strict guidelines in the redevelopment plan for each and every block would create kind of a lot of different facsimiles of themselves at some point. And while this is not totally unique, it's one of a number of projects that's being proposed in the redevelopment area that are using a variety of different styles. And so, you know, maybe it's a little bit of recency bias, because I know there have been several projects recently similar, but as the overall palette of projects gets built out, this will be one of many.
Any other questions by planning board members?
I have a less philosophical question. Can you bring up the renderings you just showed us?
Sure, sorry, one second.
And as you do that, I'll ask my question. When I look at the top of the building, near the roof, I see little things that look like chimneys. I'm not sure what those are. Are they AC units that are just barely popping up? If you look at the one straight out of the Web Street, yeah. What are those little, those little things at the top?
Yeah, those are condensers.
The condensers. So we can't see the condensers from the street.
I mean, we're pulled back in perspective here into a space that doesn't exist. You likely, you would not see them from the street. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking less from the side, thinking more from the boardwalk side.
Any other questions from planning board members of this witness, our professionals? Okay, any public questions of this witness? Let's keep it to questions. I know. Hello again, Karen May, 301 8th Avenue. Can you go back to the picture that you had where you had the 7th Avenue? You zoomed in on 7th Avenue and the, what did you call it, the view shed? You had the other, the picture, that overhead picture, the aerial, I think, that one.
Right, understanding--
Can we swing up to the 8th Avenue one and see how that lines up, please, with the 8th Avenue home that's on the corner there as well to verify that we will have the view shed on that side as well? Or does that building need to be pulled back a little bit further?
So the--
Or pulled south.
Yeah, the view shed is, you know, something that's being accommodated to the extent that's possible, certainly not required by the redevelopment plan. No setback is required, so these buildings could be eight feet closer to the street, but it looks to me like we're fairly well in line with the homes on 8th.
Then I guess you're saying that the redevelopment plan does not say that you need to maintain the avenues?
It does not, no.
Interesting, thank you. Any other questions from the public of this witness?
I just have one. Neil Wood, 307th Ave, on diagonal from this space. If you were to take the end units, 7th, 8th, and Webb, and go down one level to three, how many square feet of living space would you lose?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, sir.
He's not the architect.
Okay, no idea. All right, thank you.
Mike Sazork, 305 8th Avenue. I don't know if this is the architect or it's you--
Mike, can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, I don't know if it's the architect or it's you, but the materials on the outside of the building, I know you talked about the colors, but materials, is that something that you--
Our architect did provide testimony on that earlier, and the material boards are part of the package submitted to the board.
Okay, so something like including natural materials, like wood somewhere, is that something that--
Honestly, that was the architect's testimony.
Last time, it was the architect, yeah.
Yeah, okay, even though he's booked on the, the colors, different.
Yeah, I was just presenting the renderings to show the change to the colors and the landscaping that was described by Mr. Curley.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay.
Those are all of the witnesses that we are planning to present.
All right, let's, motion to close public portion?
So move. Second. Anyone?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Excellent. So I know you'll move to the public portion next, and I'll reserve comment for the very end, but those are all the witnesses that we plan to present.
Okay. Any comments that, actually, we'll go to the, any comments that anyone would like to bring up from the planning board?
We do? Can we take it up?
Sure. All right, we are going to take a five-minute break, and we're ending at 10, so let's skedaddle. All right.
Motion for a break?
Motion for a break. Second. Everyone, aye.
We're back. I will take roll call. James Bonanno.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Eric Gallobo.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Jen Sauter.
Here.
Vice Chair Goonan.
Here.
And Joan Barbour.
Here. Okay, all right. Time to open for a public comment. Now, remember, we have three minutes. There are some, there are a couple of letters that people want to read into the record, which is fine, but other than that, we have three minutes per person.
I could just clarify on the letters.
Sure.
My understanding is that the letters are that person's feelings, that's fine. They cannot be representing the feelings of other neighbors or other people in the neighborhood.
That's correct.
Why don't we take a look at this?
Well, actually--
We don't want to object to it.
Yeah, I haven't seen, I have not seen letters.
Take a look at both of them. Yeah, they can represent themselves, they can't represent the feelings of other folks, unless we have an attorney who's representing somebody else.
Just yourself.
Just yourself, okay. That's fine.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry? Okay, that's fine. But do you express the opinions or feelings of other members of the public besides the attorney?
Yes.
She's speaking for us, also.
Oh, okay.
All right. Are we saying we have an attorney representing others?
Yeah. Tell us who you represent. You've got to make that clear on the record.
Neil Wood, 307th Ave.
Okay, and you retain the attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
So then, anyone that's retained by council then does not speak during public comment, their attorney speaks for them.
Yeah. All right, so I'll have you identify your lines, because you represent and you'll speak for them, correct?
Yep.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay, it's a motion to open public comment?
So move. Second.
Second.
Good. We're in?
Aye.
Aye. Do we want to start with the letters, or do you want to end with them? Sorry?
Why don't we end with the letters?
Let's end with the letters. Let's start with, anyone have comments that did not write a letter? That would like to speak?
Represented by council.
Okay, all right, so then, let's go with, oh, wait a second.
There was some motion.
There was motion over there?
Well, just a question, does, if I have comments beyond a letter, am I allowed to get three minutes? Because I didn't know I was going to read the letter today, so if I have comments beyond that, do I get three minutes? At, only three minutes in addition to the letter?
Okay, all right, this is a very, this is a very unusual circumstance, but go ahead. Go ahead.
I like the user.
Go ahead.
Am I first then?
You are first, because there are no other comments outside of the two letters.
Okay, so I put the letter aside.
Letter aside, make your comment.
Okay, so first of all, thank you very much, this has been a long--
First of all, you have to be sworn in.
Okay.
Because you're going to testify. Please raise your hand. You solemn swearer from the testimony about to give this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and your address.
Karen May, M-A-Y, 301 8th Avenue.
You can give us your comments.
Okay. So first of all, thank you, this has been tremendous learning for me, as well as appreciate the time and the diligence that the planning board has put into this and obviously, a lot of work by the developer. So I understand and appreciate that a development is going to happen with this property. Will we miss a vacant lot? Absolutely. But we do understand that you're going to do this. And the fact, as just, as the developers, you're looking for a return on your investment, you're looking to maximize your return on your investment. I understand that, I appreciate it. I'm a finance person by training and by career. What I am asking is that all of you understand and appreciate where we're all coming from. This is where we live, this is where we have lived, and this is what is going to change significantly for us. And so, we want to, you know, the impact of the construction, the impact of living with this change in our neighborhood, this is one of the few developments, you know, that's going to be very, very close to a very residential area. So this, on the north end of town, is a very significant change. And we are just asking that you also understand, appreciate where we're coming from. We don't get a return on this. We really don't. We lose our views, we have much more density, we have people driving on a narrow, one-way street of a higher volume coming down Webb. There's a significant impact. The parking, every house that comes into the neighborhood, there's less, there's more guests that come in. That impacts our parking. If you have ever tried to park at the north end of the town on a weekend in the summer, you would understand and appreciate what we go through. And so, we are just asking that you appreciate that. And the density, my personal opinion is the density on this lot of 45 units is significant. And I know there's more that's allowed in the plan, but for less than two acres, this just seems like a lot. And if, you know, if I even saw one unit out of each one of those six buildings go away, that would thrill me to no end. To have grass that we can walk our dogs, this is a very heavy dog area, because we're right by Dog Beach. They all come through where we live. So please understand, appreciate where we're coming from when we're pushing back. And as somebody who had four people in her immediate family members die from cancer over a 10-year period, when I hear contamination of soil, it's a trigger. Okay? So please understand that's where we're coming from when we ask a lot of questions and ask for answers. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, hang on, you're going to read your letter.
Yes.
Yeah, just, I'm sorry, just a second. Sir, do you have a comment?
Yes.
Okay, so let's do the comment before you do your letter. Let's get the comments, let's get the comments out.
Please raise your right hand, solemn swearer from the testimony about to give this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and spell it and give us your address.
It's Mike--
Put your hand down.
Mike Sazork, 305 8th Avenue. Last name is S-Z-C-Z-U-R-E-K.
Thank you.
Just on the remediation aspect of this, I have two kids. We live here full-time. We're basically directly across the street from this, so super concerning for me. I understand you guys are complying with whatever the DEP says. However--
We're basically directly across the street from this, so super concerning for me. I understand you guys are complying with whatever the DEP says. However, anything you can do to notify the public of what's going on outside of your responsibilities to the DEP would be greatly appreciated. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments besides letters? Okay, go ahead.
For the record, Karen May again?
Karen May again.
Okay, read your letter.
Can I just ask one question of Ms. May? You are not a licensed professional planner, correct?
That is correct. I'm an accountant and controller.
Thank you.
I'm a finance person. All right. Do I, dear, right from the?
Just read it through, so that it can get into the record.
Okay, dear Mayor Moore, Deputy Mayor Quinn, Councilmember Clayton, Chairwoman Krasak, sorry, and members of the Asbury Park Planning Board, I'm writing to formally express our opposition to the proposed real estate development known as the Delta Townhouse Development Project, Kingsley Street, Webb Street, Seventh Avenue, and Eighth Avenue, Block 4306, Lots 1 through 8, APW Redeveloper LLC and Asbury Partners LLC here and after the delta. Oh, wow. While we understand that growth and development within our city is inevitable, based upon a review of the plan documents submitted to date by APW Redeveloper LLC and Asbury Partners, along with the testimony provided during the planning board meetings held September 9th and 23rd, this was written, so it doesn't have this today. This particular project presents several significant concerns to the residents of the area that require additional attention and consideration for how these concerns will be addressed. After 20 years of vacationing in Asbury with my wife Sheila Nealon, and I purchased our own condo at 301 Eighth Avenue in March of 2021, we were attracted to the northeast part of town because it provided us with what we thought was the best aspects of life in Asbury Park. The character of the residential area, proximity to the dog surfer section of North Beach, while still being within walking distance to music, restaurants, and retail shops in town. We chose Asbury Park because we love the diversity, the people, and the all-around vibe of this city. We have watched as the city transformed over the years, which includes the ongoing development of the waterfront area. To be frank, we like some of the developments more than others. The loss of open space and the challenge of finding parking have been a downside of the changes to the city. And now, the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan, WRP, has reached the North Shore phase with the Rhythm Development on Seventh Avenue, the Delta Townhouse Development between Seventh and Eighth Avenue, and the views between Eighth and Deal Lake Drive, which in total would add 113 units to a two-and-a-half-block area. For today, we would like to focus on the Delta Townhouse development that is currently before the planning board. We believe this project will significantly disrupt the character of our community and negatively impact the quality of life for residents. The recurring theme in the WRP is to preserve the Bradley Plan, the character of the surrounding area, and the character of Asbury Park. First, there are several environmental concerns that we have with this project. At the September 23rd meeting, that was, there was mentioned that there was soil contamination. We would like to understand what the findings were and how they will be remediated without contaminating the groundwater and any contaminated air dust drifting into surrounding properties. Storm order. In developers' documentation, it looks like they are requesting a waiver regarding stormwater impact on the flooding in our area. Deal Lake is known to breach the road, including flooding Webb. We believe this waiver should not be granted. Understand that better now. Impact on airflow slash sea breezes. Building 2 and 3 face Kingsley in our four stories and run from Seventh to Eighth with only a small break between them. Any airflow through the break will then hit Building 6, another four-story building. Traffic. The entrances to the development are on Webb Street, a one-way, narrow street. Why should this small residential street bear the burden of this additional traffic? How will construction vehicles maneuver with cars parked on both sides of the street? Focusing now on the WRP, we have concerns regarding the Delta project honoring the principles of the WRP such as: Section 1.2 Bradley Plan of 1877. Increase the views of ocean from the, increase the views of the ocean from the city, facilitate the movement of sea breezes into the city, and provide space for landscape and parking improvements adjacent to the beach, page 5. The Delta Townhouse development is exceedingly dense and does not include sufficient breaks between buildings to allow for air movement. It is primarily buildings and hard surface and only provides a very small amount of landscaping. The Cove development in town did a much better job of incorporating open space and landscaping. Section 2.2 Redevelopment Objectives, page 9. Preserve the character and history of Asbury Park. Preserve the Bradley Plan. Prevent parking and traffic problems. My note, a traffic study has not yet been presented. Learned about that. Locate and configure taller buildings perpendicular to the ocean to maximize views from upland neighborhoods. Buildings 1 and 4, which face Seventh and Eighth Avenues respectively, each consist of 10 four-story units with no breaks. The height of the buildings do not taper down as they get closer to Webb and the residential homes. These two buildings are also set closer to the property line along Seventh and Eighth than the residential homes to the west, thus obscuring their views and airflow. Develop new residential buildings that are compatible with and extend AP's Special Oceanside Manor. A planning board member noted that the development reminded him of an army barracks. Section 2.3 Planning Objectives Within the Prime Renewal Area North Shore, page 17. The oceanfront area between Convention Hall and Deal Lake has a different character than Ocean Avenue. The North Shore is less commercial and more residential than the blocks to the south. The goal of the plan is to reinforce these qualities with new residential development and the extension of open spaces. Section 3.1 Plan Summary, page 21. The new housing will be a combination of two-to-three-story townhouses and apartments located in buildings between four and eight stories tall. This project is primarily four-story buildings with it, with only one, with only building five, having five of the 45 proposed units being three stories. The distribution of building mass within the prime renewal area has been arranged to maximize the views of the ocean, take full advantage of the city's flared avenues, and to harmonize with the scale of existing structures along the eastern edge of the adjacent residential neighborhoods. My comments, the homes on Webb are three stories at most. As previously mentioned, they are set back from the street more than the proposed development. That was my opinion based on I. Building heights will drop down to two-to-three stories as the development approaches the existing residential neighbors along Bird and Webb. Buildings 1 and 4 do not comply as they stay at four stories all the way to Webb. Section 3.5 Parking in the Prime Renewal Area. One, there is a large number of existing on-street parking spaces throughout the city, page 47. This section does not take into account the existing houses, buildings, and the North Shore that have no off-street parking, and there are not enough permit-only parking spots. 113 additional housing units in this area brings more visitors to an area where it is already challenging to find parking in the summer. You have to park your car on Friday, and you can't move it until Monday. Section 3.8 Land Use. Bulk Standards, page 72. Reflects that the west end, the west half of the lot allows for three- and four-story buildings, but with more breaks between buildings than currently designed. Section 5.2 Asbury Master Plan. Most structures in the WRA will range in height from two to five stories, page 89. Section 5.5 NJDEP Coastal Zone Management, page 91. 77E-7.14 High-Rise Structures. High-rise buildings have been located to preserve the views to the ocean from existing residences and public streets. 77E-8.12 Scenic Resources Design. The redevelopment plan requires that the flared street perpendicular to the ocean front remain open as view corridors. Note, the water treatment plant is at the end of Eighth Avenue and impairs the view corridor. And the design of the Delta Townhouse project further impedes airflow and view corridor for Eighth Avenue with Building 4 height and lack of sufficient setback. Thank you for time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions? Jennifer, you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, all right, no.
I have an answer question.
Yeah, all right, oh, you have to.
We'll show you.
Now, you're a double role. You're testifying on your own behalf, and you're also representing a couple of clients. Normally, if you were just representing clients, I wouldn't ask you to be sworn. I would just ask you to be an attorney.
But I'm also a.
We don't have to get sworn. But since you're going to testify on your own behalf, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear from testimony about the given matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth.
I do, thank you.
Give us your name again and your address, spell your name.
Elaine Rocha, R.O.C.H.A., 301 Seventh Avenue.
Okay, perfect. Now, also, in your capacity as an attorney, who on the record, please put it on the record, who your clients are?
Dawn Curran.
Okay.
She's at 301 Seventh Avenue.
Okay.
And then Neil and Mary Ann Wood, 307th Avenue. They're across the street.
Okay, now you've got all the procedural stuff done. Floor is yours.
I have one, one question, though, procedurally. It was my understanding that the Code of Ethics does not allow an attorney to be representing themselves as a fact witness while also representing others before a tribunal. It should be.
Well, I don't know that to be a fact. I've not faced that before in 45 years. However, um, okay, so what?
So ethically, I don't know that a person can both. The Code of Ethics requires that if you think you are going to be a fact witness, you should not be an attorney in the matter representing clients. At least, that's my.
Can my partner read the letter? Can my partner read the letter?
I guess the question is, if you're, if you're on your own behalf and you're not representing others, then you read the letter on your behalf.
Okay, then I represent them.
If you're, if you're here as an attorney representing other people, then you're reading the letter on behalf of your clients, but not yourself. I just want it to be crystal clear from the record what, what the comments are about to hear, what their origin is. Whether they are your comments individually as a fact witness or whether you are an attorney representing others and it is their opinions.
How about if we do this? How about if you testify on your own behalf? I will call the other witnesses, and I will ask them a couple of questions. And if I ask them such a question as, do you agree with comments made by the prior witness? If they say yes, that gets their comments on the record. It avoids an ethical dilemma, and it's, we solve the problem. Two, three.
Is that okay with Ms. Smith?
Sure.
That's fine.
Yeah. So let's have you testify on your own behalf. I'll call the other three individuals, and take about 10 seconds of their time and confirm whether or not your comments are their comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that'll, that'll get the point across.
Thanks for that.
Perfect. Okay, so floor is yours.
Okay, now, when I prepared this, I didn't have the benefit of the current testimony.
Right, so.
Just for the record.
The board will understand.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
No timer?
No.
No, because you're only going to make the comments in the letter?
Yes.
Yes, only the comments in the letter. So there's no additional time required.
Dear Mayor Moore, Deputy Mayor Quinn, Councilmember Clayton, Chairwoman Krasak, and members of the Asbury Park Planning Board, I'm writing to formally express our opposition to the proposed.
What are you speaking to, Mike?
Our opposition to the proposed real estate development known as the Delta Townhouse Development Project, backslash Kingsley Street, Webb Street, Seventh and Eighth Avenue, backslash Block 4306, Lots 1 through 8, backslash APW Redeveloper LLC and Asbury Partners LLC here and after the delta. While we understand the need for growth and development within our city, based upon our review of the plan documents submitted to date by APW Redeveloper LLC and Asbury Partners LLC here and after the applicants, along with the testimony provided during the planning board meetings held on September 9 and 23, 2024, this particular project presents several significant concerns and red flags that warrant serious reconsideration. As a brief introduction, my partner Dawn Curran and I have lived in Asbury Park since 2003 and 2008 respectively. We purchased our first condo in 2004, filed by a townhome in 2009. There and after, we purchased our current single-family home, 301 Seventh Avenue, in 2018, which sits at the corner of Webb Street. We are fully embedded into the fabric of Asbury Park community, owning two other homes in the city, and also dedicating countless volunteer hours in service to the community. I have been a member of the Asbury Park Equity Committee since 2020, and I'm also a member of the Board of Trustees of Mercy Center, a nonprofit located on Main Street that has been serving the community of Asbury Park for decades via its food pantry, Family Resource Center, and the Sisters Academy School on Springfield Avenue. family resource center, and the Sisters Academy School on Springfield Avenue. In sum, we are long-term residents who have invested a lot of time, talent, and treasure into Asbury Park. With that backdrop, we believe this project will significantly disrupt the character of our community and negatively impact the quality of life for residents with some of our concerns set forth below. This concern, these concerns are not meant to be exhaustive. They are based on the testimony we have heard thus far from the applicant's hired professionals, along with the current plan documents. As a threshold matter, we seek to clarify comments made during the September ninth and twenty-twenty, and September ninth and twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four planning board meetings from both the Asbury Park side and from the applicants regarding the permissible building height at Webb Street. Both parties at separate times indicated that eight stories are permitted to be built along Webb Street. That is not correct according to the North Shore Design Principles as set forth on page seventeen of the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan of March fifteenth, two thousand and two, and amended in two thousand and nineteen. Here and after the WRP, the first principle states, "Develop residential buildings in the range of four to eight stories on Kingsley and decrease building height to townhouse square at Webb Street." See also the section styled bulk standards at pages seventy to seventy-two in the WRP. We have other issues with the plan documents that have not yet been testified to, but which we highlight below. First, the proposal for the entrance and exit of the delta, the delta, to be located on Webb Street, a narrow one-way side street. We were frankly shocked when we first noticed this proposal in the plan documents, especially since the other three sides of the delta are adjacent to three major thoroughfares, Kingsley Street, Seventh and Eighth Avenue, which would provide a less intrusive and safer driveway access. It's unfathomable to think that two driveways onto Webb Street will be the entry-exit point for large construction vehicles for months slash years. It will be disruptive and create an unsafe environment with construction vehicles turning in and out of Webb Street where our driveway, driveway access is located and the backdoor of our home, which serves as our daily point of entry. This entire lot has been used as the staging area for the See Here Now Festival since its inception, and every year, the vendors are driving faster and more recklessly up and down Webb Street, completely disregarding that it is a one-way street. I reached out to Deputy Chief Thompson multiple times via email during this most recent festival to log my complaints. Post-construction, the possibility that one hundred-plus cars will use the narrow one-way street for entry into, exit from the delta will dramatically change the quiet nature and safety of this small one-way street. During the summer months, we can readily imagine that Webb Street will effectively become a parking lot due to the traffic, because it gets incredibly busy during the summer months now. We implore the council and planning board to revisit this aspect of the proposal and require that the applicants change the entry slash exit points of the delta. Next, we have concerns about the impervious nature of the delta proposal, which will essentially become a massive cement landscape with little to no grass or greenery. Regardless of whether or not this may be permissible under the current floor-area ratio requirements, it's not a good idea to permit a construction of such size and scope with no room for natural drainage or runoff, especially given the history of flooding in Asbury Park. Moreover, from an aesthetic perspective, the WRP provides that the quote-unquote "North Shore District", within which the delta is proposed to be built, has a design principle regarding first impressions. It states in relevant part, "The North Shore Arrival, Park-like setting, more open buildings integrated with park." See the WRP at nine. This design principle was clearly not adhered to at all in the development of the delta, which lacks any significant greenery or spacing, and shoehorns forty-five buildings into the boundaries of the property. To that point, several planning board members commented during the September twenty-third meeting about the large facade that will be facing Webb Street from Seventh Avenue, noting that it needs to be addressed. We strongly echo these requests, given the negative impact to the aesthetics of the area and view corridor. Lastly, we are also alarmed by the passing comments made by the applicant's engineer regarding soil remediation in the context of the testimony regarding the lot realignment and the requirements for Fannie Mae loans. We understand that there were monitoring wells installed at the site for many months, and we request a full readout of those results. For the record, we seek to fully understand the extent of any soil contamination and any impact to groundwater and/or third-party property damage. We also request the details of any proposed remediation plans. We reserve the right to amend our objections and concerns at such time that testimony is presented regarding these topics or any others by the applicants. Specific concerns underscored, bold. The proposed delta plan flies in the face of the original Bradley Plan of eighteen-seventy-seven as set forth in the WRP. Page five provides in relevant part, "One characteristic that makes a city unique is the beautiful street and open space plan that was designed by Bradley. His plan sets a grid of traditionally scaled blocks and streets between four natural open spaces, Leslie Lake, Sunset Lake, Deal Lake, and the oceanfront. Streets which are perpendicular to the ocean flare as they approach the waterfront. By widening the east-west streets at their ends, Bradley increased the views of the ocean from the city, facilitated the movement of sea breezes into the city, and provided space for landscape and parking improvements adjacent to the beachfront. Our home was moved from the southwest corner of the proposed delta site in two thousand and sixteen to its current corner lot located directly across the street on Seventh Avenue, the Webb Street. Our home on its original lot set perpendicular to the ocean with a front yard setback in accordance with the Bradley Plan. When our home was moved to its current lot, it was set back in the lot to preserve the ocean views and airflow up and down Seventh Avenue, also in accordance with the Bradley Plan. The delta as currently proposed for the Seventh Avenue site, side, referred to as Proposed Lot Two, this is, side note, this is referencing a previous exhibit, will sit in direct sightline of our front yard and completely block any views of the ocean up and down Seventh Avenue. We have highlighted our home's location in yellow and have added in a red line where our front yard starts and where a perpendicular line would bisect the delta based on the current plans. See Exhibit A. I have it attached to my letter. As many members of the planning board and other members from the city raised during the September twenty-third meeting, the current design proposed of the delta is not consistent with the other new developments across the city. Stated another way, the new developments in the waterfront redevelopment area are perpendicular to the ocean to retain the grid-like form in accordance with the Bradley Plan and to not cut off the view corridor and the benefits of the flared streets. As a current example, the new development under construction between Second and Third Avenue at Berg Street is perpendicular to the ocean and not being built parallel to the street or alongside the flares, quote-unquote. The air flare and view from the home across the street and located at the corner of Second Avenue in Berg is not being impacted because the setback for the new development is aligned with the current home. See two photos attached as Exhibits B-one and B-two. We selected this perspective slash view because this home's location at Second and Berg is a similar representation of the view and where our home is located on the corner of Seventh Avenue and Webb Street. We've spent time exploring the various sites around the city that exist or are currently under construction within the waterfront redevelopment area, and no other development is being constructed right up to the sidewalk where blocks the views of the homes immediately to the west. Nor are they being built parallel to the street or along the flare. Rather, they are being constructed perpendicular to the ocean and with appropriate setbacks in accordance with the Bradley Plan. I encourage members of the City Council, Planning Board, and other relevant members of the Planning Office and City Government to walk the relevant areas and refamiliar, refamiliar, refamiliarize yourself with the in-progress construction plans. If Seventh Avenue or Proposed Lot Two is built along with the flare slash parallel to Seventh Avenue as currently proposed, rather than perpendicular to the ocean, it will be an outlier to every other development in the waterfront redevelopment area and severely impact the view corridor. We also highlight the critical testimony of several members of the planning board and other members of the city government who expressed similar concerns regarding the Seventh Avenue side of the delta proposal during the meeting. Unfortunately, we are not certain of everyone's names who spoke from the dais, however, we cite the relevant timestamps from the Asbury TV recording. Of September twenty-third, minutes fifty-seven dash fifty-nine, discussion starts regarding the suggestion to make the building on Seventh Avenue parallel to Eighth Avenue rather than parallel to Seventh Avenue as currently proposed in order to shorten the view of the garages from the Webb Street perspective. Hour one, colon, oh-one, colon, eighteen dash hour one, colon, oh-one, colon, forty-two. Quote, "There's also something that is a little bit atypical of the site plan here, which is the alignment of the buildings on Seventh Avenue are parallel to the property line, which is not typical," close quote. Hour one, colon, oh-one, colon, fifty dash hour one, colon, I guess it's minute two, colon, fifteen seconds. Quote, "The typical arrangement is that this corner of the building would be aligned to the prevailing setback here." Parenths pointing to our front yard setback at 301 Seventh Avenue. So what these people have lost is their view shed, close quote. "You should have a wider gap at the last building," parenths referencing the first building nearest to Kingsley Street, close parenths. Hour one, colon, two minutes, colon, twenty-eight seconds dash hour one, colon, two minutes, colon, thirty-seven seconds. Quote, "It speaks to the issue of the blank facade," parenths pointing to the facade facing Webb from Seventh Avenue, because, close parenths, "because if somebody's approaching from this angle," parenths, "down Seventh Avenue traveling west to east," close parenths, "this blank facade will be the most visible," close parenths. Hour one, colon, minute three, colon, seventeen seconds dash hour one, colon, minute three, colon, thirty-seven seconds. Quote, "We maintain the view corridor, which is something we've been very particular about on a lot of applications all over the city. The view corridor down the street is a feature of the original city plan, and so maintenance of that view corridor, I think, should be the goal," close quote. Hour one, colon, minute nine, colon, second nine dash hour one, colon, minute nine, colon, fifteen seconds, quote, "It looks like an army barracks. It really does." Hour one, colon, nine, colon, twenty-one dash hour one, colon, nine minutes, colon, thirty-two seconds, quote, "While there are not a lot of people on Webb, there are people that do live there, and they deserve the best we can give them." As currently proposed, the delta will block the seven, the view of Seventh Avenue starting from Webb and continuing east-west, thereby destroying the entire intent behind the Bradley Plan and flaring of Seventh Avenue. Also, as a reminder for members of the City Council and Planning Board, after the north end of the boardwalk was torn down in two thousand and eighteen and rebuilt after strenuous objections from the community, a public restroom was added on the boardwalk at the end of Seventh Avenue. The restroom is located in the middle of Seventh Avenue and serves to impede the view and sea breezes coming from the ocean. Adding a large development parallel to Seventh Avenue and with marginal setback will further serve to block the ocean views and sea breezes, which are cornerstones of the Bradley Plan. The delta as proposed will negatively impact the use and enjoyment of our property and that of our neighbors. Thus, the delta plans need to be revisited and redesigned in accordance with the principles of the WRP, in accordance with a precedent that has been established by other developments across the city. Lastly, many of us in the community feel that we have not been adequately informed or engaged in the design process up to this point. While we are grateful for and applaud the pushback and questions by the planning board to the applicants, meaningful input from the local residents is critical to ensuring that any development is in line with the needs and desires of the community. We respectfully urge the City Council and Planning Board to reconsider this development and to consider the significant, significant concerns raised by us and other members of the community. We strongly request that the City Council and Planning Board explore alternative and substantial revisions that will better serve the long-term interests of our community while protecting its unique character, environment, and infrastructure. Long after the applicants are gone and their hired professionals have been paid their fees, it is the community that has to live with the impact of the delta and the results of your decisions for years to come. To reiterate the words of one of your planning board, uh, one of, one member of the planning board, "The folks on Webb, quote-unquote, deserve the best we can give them," and we would add, "So do all of the local residents." Thank you for your time and consideration for this matter.
I just have two questions, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure.
Just to clarify the record, you are not a licensed professional planner, is that correct?
No, I'm not.
Okay. And when you formulated your comments this evening, that was before, sorry, when you formulated the comments you just made this evening, that was before hearing the testimony this evening, correct?
Before the, the comment this.
Right, when you formulated these comments, that was before.
Before, yes.
Hearing today's testimony.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the two letters, uh, why don't we have Karen Mays mark as?
I don't think we need to mark them now that they've been read.
Well, okay, I thought maybe they wanted to put them into the record.
I think they're in the record now.
All right, that's fine.
They've been read in.
Does anybody want to see the letter beyond what was said? No? Okay, that's fine, we don't have to do that. Okay, so, sir, please step up to the mic. You heard what I said before, so you know what I'm gonna do.
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. Salmo swear affirm testimony about the given this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name again for the record, spell it, and your address.
Neil Wood, three hundred Seventh Avenue, last name Wood, W-O-O-D, three hundred Seventh Avenue, Unit One.
Is it fair to characterize, I'm gonna ask you a question, is it fair to say that your comment is that you agree with the testimony that was just provided by Ms. Roca?
Uh, wholeheartedly.
Okay, so, yeah. Uh, and, okay, that's, that's really all I have to say. Do you, any?
No, thank you.
Okay, you're good?
Yes.
Okay. May I speak to whoever else you want to come up? Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Salmo swear affirm testimony about the given this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay. You put your hand down, and please state your name for the record and spell it, and your address.
Sure, my name is Dawn Curran, C-U-R-R-A-N, three zero one Seventh Avenue.
Is it fair to state, characterize that you would agree with the comments made by Ms. Roca, wholeheartedly?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You solemnly swear affirm testimony about the given this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Wood, W-O-O-D, three hundred Seventh Avenue, Unit One.
Okay, is it fair to say, I'm thirsty, excuse me, is it, is it fair to state that you agree with the comments made by Ms. Roca?
I do.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I have one. Can I have one?
Are you gonna be on your own, correct?
No, I agree with that. The same building.
Oh, okay, sir, then please raise your right hand. Salmo swear affirm testimony about the given this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And your name is?
Robert Longo, L-O-N-G-O.
Okay.
It's three hundred Seventh Avenue, apartment twenty-four.
Okay, is it fair to say that you agree with the comments that were made by Ms. Roca?
Yes, yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Motion to close public comment.
Salmo.
Second.
We thank you very much for your consideration in this application. Your applicant has spent a great deal of time working on these plans, starting with the TRC, going to council, going through various iterations, and we believe we addressed the comments that you brought to us at the last meeting by moving the buildings, shifting them down, and the various other items that you asked us to look at. We looked at them, you heard testimony this evening that we did the best we could to accommodate, in some cases, fully accommodated what you requested. So we do ask that you approve this application this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, may I ask you to just give us a brief synopsis of how it ended up here today, who you've met with to get here?
Sure. How we got here today, so, we actually, the applicant applied to the TRC over a year ago.
And who, I'm sorry, I wanted to sort of demystify the process a little bit?
Sure.
If that's okay?
I can, I can walk through the steps. So, over a year ago, the applicant's first step was to apply to the TRC, the Technical Review Committee, which is a required committee under the redevelopment plan. Uh, the TRC held a, a public meeting, I believe it was in September of two thousand and twenty-three, at which time it heard a presentation from the applicant concerning how this plan complied with the waterfront redevelopment plan. From those comments, the TRC, we revised the plans and then submitted them to the City Council, at which point the City Council had us come in and make a presentation at a public council meeting. The City Council heard that presentation, it then considered what's called a subsequent developer agreement, which is a written contract between the developer and the city as to how the application will comply with the redevelopment agreement and redevelopment plan. The agreement also specifies things like the construction logistics and the payment of affordable housing fees, et cetera. Uh, that was approved by the City Council, which also approved the concept and found it consistent with the waterfront redevelopment plan, which then allowed us to file an application here at the planning board, which we did, uh, back in June, and now we've been in front of you for the two meetings in September and the one in October. So it's, it's been a process that's now involved, um, five public meetings.
In that process, are you, is there a statutory requirement to provide notice to residents?
There is.
Prior to the planning board?
There is not.
Prior to the planning board?
Prior to the planning.
At the planning board, there is.
Yeah, no, that's right, that's why I asked the question, like, prior to the planning.
Right, no, the, there is a requirement under the redevelopment plan for certain types of applications, but not this kind.
Do you, as a courtesy, normally provide notice to residents who've been to a good view?
We do what's required. The City Council may have their own policies going forward, but we, we do what's required under the redevelopment plan and the municipal land use law.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments from any of the planning board members?
Well, I mean, I have comments, yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I think it's, first of all, I want to thank all of the residents who showed up this evening and the prior to meetings. I think hearing your concerns is very important, and, um, I hope that what you've learned in this process encourages you to stay engaged and to remain aware of what's happening, um, with relationship to redevelopment in general and planning board meetings. I think we, as a board, have run up against this many times where citizens at the very end of the process, where what we're being asked to decide is in conflict with what they're asking us to decide. And so I feel that this is another one of those situations where our role is to look at the site plan and determine whether or not it conforms to what was approved before it got here. And while the applicant has made changes that we've requested, none of them are required. This is something that they're doing, and so we are adjusting at the margins when the process started many months before it even got here, and we do not have the jurisdiction or the power to ask them to change the size of the building or move the building or, you know, these are things they, you know, we are trying to adjust small things that we can to get to the best outcome that we can. And, you know, I think that that speaks to, you know, a kind of, just, the long length of the process, and so I appreciate all of the things you've asked us, but many of them are literally outside of our jurisdiction. And what we're here to do is to make it as good as we can within the parameters of what we're allowed to do. So our votes tonight, I want to make this comment, yes, yea or nay, we have to follow the law, as Chairwoman Krasik always says to us, I believe.
Oh, yes.
And that's where we are left. And to that point, I do think, um, I do think this application falls short on an aesthetic and sort of, you know, kind of, design, just based, you know, just on that, I think it falls short. I wish there was more variation and more consideration for how NASA and site planning happened before it gets here, but that's not what we're here to decide. We are here to decide whether or not it conforms to what was approved. And so I just wanted to take that opportunity to both thank what you have, thank, thank you for what you've told us, and to hopefully allow us the grace to do what we have to do, because it's what the law requires us to do.
Some of the other things, if I may, that also, for those of you in the audience, that, things like, um, that we have to go through and the applicant has to go through, having to do with stormwater management, uh, having to do with potential contamination remediation or whatever, that, those are all dealt with, with outside agencies, that if they don't, if those agencies feel that these applicants have not complied, it will not be built. So therefore, they have to go through this process, it's not like we can, it's not like we can hold that as a, oh, well, show you the contamination process or what has to be done. DEP has all that. They have requirements that the applicants have to adhere to. Just like with stormwater management, their plans will not be approved and it will not be built unless it adheres to those rules. That's why, as Eric had mentioned, I, I'm a believer that we have to go by the law, and we have to deal with process, we have to deal with, we do the best we can, and as he said, there are certain things we can maneuver, there are other things that we cannot. So I echo everything that Eric said, that we appreciate you all coming here and voicing your concerns. Uh, I also do feel that, uh, a process should be, the process should be better, so that you know that when something's coming in your area, and that there are meetings that are happening. But that's not for me, I don't know those processes. That's a, that's a city process that has to, perhaps, should be modified, or you should voice your opinions that it should be. For example, like you'd mentioned, the TRC, TRC first step, but then again, it goes to council, another step. So it's kind of like knowing when all the steps are happening so that you can participate and voice your opinion at those times, because that's before it stops here, and here we are. This is what we have. And as I said, we, our applicant has been very gracious and made modifications, that as Eric had said, they truly didn't have to, but they wanted to, because we asked for the. those and we wanted to do what they could. So here we are. Not always ideal, but this is where we are. I don't know if anybody else has anything that they would like to say? Anybody else on the, on the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I agree, excuse me, I agree with both of you, and we've all been here many years, and once it was brought to our attention that the council should do that, we have done it. Unfortunately, this project started before somebody brought that to our attention, that people weren't notified. Now any project is being notified by the city about when the council's gonna hear it, the public presentation. So it was a good suggestion, and it's been taken, and it's being done. Again, I apologize, nobody made that suggestion before then.
But also, I think that, just to add on, is that I also have to say that there is a certain level of responsibility to our residents that all the agendas are on, on the websites. I know that sometimes they're hard to get through, but everything is there to say that, you know, this, this particular development is going to be presented. It's there. So it's, I think it's a joint effort that if you're, if you want to know, if you're interested, take a look at the agendas, 'cause every meeting has something in this city that is presented, pretty much, some sort of a development that's being presented. And you know what? That development might be close to you. And I thank the mayor and the council for taking those steps to, to make it a better process, 'cause that's all we want. We want it to be a better process. And, you know, we're, I have to say that I personally, and I know that this board is thrilled that you came here to talk to us. It's, it's a wonderful thing.
I'm amazed at the diligence of the work that you have all done to educate yourselves about this particular application.
Any, any other comments from anyone else from the board?
I just wanna make one other comment, which is, something we heard a lot about was, you know, people's environmental concerns, stormwater, contamination, and we didn't spend a ton of time on it when we discussed this application. I just wanna say, I speak well at night knowing that the engineers have looked at this stuff, Mr. Vakian has reviewed all the stormwater stuff, and then NJ D E P is, I mean, very strict. So knowing that they have to approve everything and that our applicant will definitely go through the process, and all the i's will be dotted, the t's will be crossed, as far as stormwater and contamination remediation. Even though it did not get discussed a lot here at the Planning Board, I speak well at night knowing that there are the right people keeping an eye on that stuff, and I know you guys all want more information about that, and it will be publicly available, or will be publicly available, even if it's not made available at this point.
Anything else? Okay. Do you have, do you have a list, Mr. Surpikov?
Yes. I have, I always start off with the standard boilerplate, which covers CAFRA compliance, the E P compliance, or dress all of those I just mentioned, so that I don't, I don't try to write them out here this year, but there are every waterfront resolution as well as all of the resolutions, but there's extra, one or two extra conditions in a W R E project. First thing I had written down was, usually we have the staging plan discussed and agreed to, James, his department, is that necessary in this case, or is that taken care of according to the, another agreement that's taken? There's another...
The City Council approved a subsequent developer agreement that had a construction staging plan.
So I don't have to be concerned about staging in this.
Why does it hurt not to put it in?
Because you already got it covered.
Right, well, I guess, as a condition, we'll agree to comply with the plan that the City Council approved.
Okay, all right, well, I'll take out the reference to James, but I'll put in City Council.
Yep.
I get it, I'll put it in. Okay. Next comment I have is that we're addressing the north-south traffic aisle, where the street ends at the sufficient height of the wall plant against the screen, the headlight and glare.
Yes, I would like to, I would like to ensure for that one, that, yes, but it should be higher than the thirty inches.
I have in here that it must be in the bylaws.
Oh, to maintain.
To maintain it at a certain height. I need, I need a number.
All right, we need a, we need an S U V height.
Somebody has to tell me that number.
I should've asked it during the hearing. Why don't they just plant higher bushes to begin with?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that why don't we request that they plant higher bushes? Thirty inches is not gonna be enough, we know that.
There is also an ordinance that does not allow bushes higher than four feet at a front property line.
Yeah, it's not higher than four feet, but...
Right, no, that's what I'm saying, so like thirty inches and forty-eight inches are...
That's four feet. Plant left to go, yeah.
Yeah.
You tell me, you want forty-eight inches?
I want, I'd like something to make sure that those, that any, any...
Yeah, forty-eight inches.
Let's go, forty-eight.
Is that consensus on board?
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you want it installed at forty-eight and maintained at forty-eight?
I want it maintained at forty-eight and installed at forty-eight. So we're starting so that there is no glare coming in.
Okay, just as long as I'm clear, I wanna make sure the resolution is clear.
Yep.
Are we asking them to keep the same species?
Be strict. It's like, that's a really...
I know, but it's like, I'm open to having discussion about what, how high does it have to be?
Well, I was gonna say, maybe we give like a range so the plants can grow and be pruned.
Thirty-six, go for it.
Yeah, thirty-six to forty-eight. Let me tie it a little lower. Thirty-six to forty-eight.
Thirty-six to forty-eight?
Grow and be pruned.
That's fine. As long as they...
I'll give it thirty-six to forty-eight.
That's fine.
Send out the draft resolution. Please note, give me your comments.
But are we asking them to keep the same species? 'Cause we have...
I have no idea.
I was gonna say, as long as there's flexibility to work with your professionals on a different species, 'cause we don't know that that species comes to that size.
Absolutely. Dawn is okay with that.
Okay.
Brian and I will handle it.
Okay, cool. Very important, all projects subject to any outstanding conditions in the reports that we agreed to at the meeting, especially the engineering and everybody who's concerned about. I know that Sam and Bob were back and forth, so I'm gonna make sure that that's covered. And if there's any issues with the Donna's report that have yet to be addressed or that are going to be addressed, that'll be taken care of. The mid, now, this is where I'm gonna need some help with, the mid-block crosswalk extending from the Kingsley side back. You want, you want signage and a raised crosswalk or just a raised crosswalk?
Both.
Both, okay?
I think the signage is ugly, but...
Well, yeah, I'll reply back.
My opinion is a raised crosswalk.
I don't know if we're supposed to speak, I really don't, so I'm making at least...
All right, well, I know everybody seems to like the idea of the raised crosswalk.
Yeah.
So I gotta, okay. The internal traffic flow is gonna be reduced to one-way traffic.
Only on the east-west side.
Yes.
And based on whether...
Only on the east-west side, okay, yeah.
And if the garbage truck can get through.
So long as the garbage truck can properly...
Properly...
Ingress, ingress, and do its work.
Yes.
And if so, if it can be accomplished, that, the space that is saved, so to speak, will be landscaped.
Correct.
Okay. And that's something that's gonna be taken care of between, I assume, Mr., between Bob and Sam, correct? Yeah, okay, just wanna make sure I'm on the right... And on the, again, on the maintenance manuals for the stormwater systems and so on, we're gonna make sure that there's a comment or a condition in there, that the maintenance manuals are supplied to you and that it's clear that the applicant must maintain these systems going forward, or the applicant doesn't need, which will be the H O A at some point in the future, okay, to ensure that the site's gonna be protected. There was a comment in Donna's discussion at the front yard grading, gonna reduce the slope, revise that slope, and that'll be subject to review and panel by Donna. And Sam, do you wanna be a part of that?
Yes.
Yes.
The lighting comments, I understand that that's been taken care of, however, we'll put in if there's any, Donna will tell me if there's any issue with that, and we're commenting that. And there was another comment by John Bowden, a public that you picked up on.
Yeah, it was about the update of the, we wanted the update of the void-to-solid ratios and the minimum fenestration. I believe that that's what it was, that he was going to provide that.
Okay, that I will, with Donna as well, as I can.
Yep. Just, it'll be provided by the applicant, generally.
I'm sorry?
That'll be provided by the applicant, not necessarily John.
Yeah, it's actually the architect.
Yeah, no, I just said, but it was Donna John's testimony. The standard legal language for the lock consolidation and ultimately the subdivision, the creation, you gotta give me that documentation to perfect the subdivision. And we'll make sure that your engineer and our engineer will review, you need some balanced descriptions of that, which I assume there will be for that, to make sure they're correct. And that's what I have, other than the standard five or six conditions that I couldn't agree with.
I have, I'm sorry, one clarification, just going back to the one-way street. I believe I said it was so long as a trash truck could traverse it and so long as residents didn't have to make three-point turns to...
On those particular drive-ups.
On the buildings on Seventh and Eighth.
Okay, and, yeah, please do.
Are we, will the updated layout plan give us the reverse parking and the new street configuration?
Yes, yes. We will revise the plans to comply with the newly adopted infrastructure component report revisions.
And also, everything that you'd mentioned today, that all the modifications that were made, that those are already in the plans or you will, you will update your plans to have everything?
Those were filed on the site plan sheet, and those revisions will be made then to carry through to the rest of the site plan.
All right, so those, those are okay, and we have the color renderings and everything that we had talked about, so we have those already. We're good.
But for the, the site plans as part of resolution compliance would be updated to reflect...
To reflect all.
All those, the changes that were testified to this evening.
Yes, yes, okay. I think that that's, that's what you have.
Yeah, I always reference in that the most recent plans are, everything is gonna be built according to the plans that were reviewed and approved by the board, which we reviewed and reviewed and approved the most recent plans. All testimonies submitted into the record by the applicant's witnesses are incorporated so that nobody can say, I didn't mean that. Yes, you do, you said it. So that's it, that's what I have.
Okay. Did anybody else, any other Planning Board member, did we miss anything?
I think so, and if I did, we'll draft it around.
We'll draft it and we'll send it around again.
Send it around.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to, to approve this site plan with the recommendations that we had just noted?
Well, why don't we, we gotta do two things.
Sure.
We gotta have a motion to approve the site plan, we gotta have a motion to approve the subdivision.
Ah, okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve the subdivision? That has to be done.
Submove.
I'll second.
Do, and Barbara, you second?
Yes.
Thank you. Go for it.
James Benano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Eric Galpo.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Jen Souter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunin.
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerzak.
Yes.
Thank you.
And for the record, Chairwoman Kerzak reviewed the transfers from the twenty-third video, et cetera, and signed the certification.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.